Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, once again, welcome this evening. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Boston City TV, which you can find on YouTube, as well as Comcast Channel 24, R C N Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. We have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please introduce himself in Espanol?
Good evening. My name is Robert Dalla. I am the Spanish interpreter. Everything will be interpreted from English into Spanish and vice versa if necessary. Do you have the equipment available for interpreter interpretation? Thank you very much.
Gracias. If you, excuse me, if you'd like to sign up for public comment this evening, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvix, out in the hallway. Sign up for both. Public comment periods will be, will end at 6:30 PM. Well, first of all, we want to start, start off our proceedings this evening on a somber note. This has been a difficult week for the BPS community and a couple of weeks, as a matter of fact, with the loss of Reverend Michael Haynes last week as well. We've had a number of losses in our family and first, we want to extend our deepest condolences to our colleague, Ms. Alex Oliver-Davila, our vice chair, and the loss of her father earlier this week. We've also lost in our senior staff, Mr. John Hanlon, our chief operating officer, his mother-in-law, Mary Sheffield, also passed over the weekend. Mary was a 35-year veteran of the Boston Public Schools as a teacher at the Lee Academy in Dorchester, which is also where her daughter and John's wife, Caroline Hanlon, currently teaches. So, it's all in the family. She was, she'll, she'll be deeply missed. She's got a very large family. There was a very long line at the wake earlier today, and they have a very deep and loving family, but we'll certainly be missing her from our family as well. And the final loss that we suffered this week was longtime BPS educator, central office administrator and principal, Ms. Eileen Nash. Ms. Nash is known to pretty much everyone in BPS over her many decades working for the schools. When my children first started at the Beethoven Orenberger about, I think it's eight or nine years ago now, she was the principal there. She's been all across the district in a number of different positions, and her last position with the district was deputy superintendent for special education. And since that time, she's done a number of pieces of consulting work all across the Commonwealth, working with Commissioner Riley in Lawrence and in a number of other capacities, and she's always been there for the district no matter the need. She was a great woman. I joked with a number of people recently that I wish I would have known her when she was servant beer at Fenway, which was one of her side jobs a number of years ago. Mr. Goncalvo knew her then. But she'll be deeply missed. Her sister, Mary, as many other folks know, was also a longtime BPS educator and is a superintendent now up in Maine. And so, I just ask for everyone to take a moment of silence and recognize the contributions that each of these individuals have made to, to the district. Thank you. And Superintendent, I believe you had a couple of words you wanted to share about Reverend Haynes as well while we're, we're on the subject.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I didn't have the honor of knowing Eileen, but the last few days, I've heard just wonderful things about her, and I wish I had had an opportunity for her to download all her incredible knowledge I've heard that she had and the contributions that she made to the whole entire family here. So, it's extremely sad, and, and I know that we'll miss her deeply. Also, this past week, I was able to attend the services for Reverend Michael T. Haynes, who is an incredible public servant, leader, spiritual advisor, and teacher of the Boston Public Schools. And there were not very many people here in Roxbury or throughout Boston that, lives that he didn't touch as Reverend of 12 Baptist Church, or whether he was a teacher or state representative. His leadership will be extremely missed and his long life and his many, many contributions to this community. So, I just wanted to spend just a moment to recognize his legacy.
Well, thank you very much, Superintendent. And again, our condolences to the Nash, the Sheffield, the Haynes, and the Oliver-Davila families. Well, turning our focus now to the business at hand and on a lighter note, we, and brighter, brighter news, we're delighted to welcome back our student representative, Ms. Evelyn Reyes, who's entering her second year as a student representative on the school committee. Evelyn's now a senior at the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science, and she's told me that she has to get out of here early tonight because she's got to finish a college application. So, we're going to try and move this meeting along just as quickly as possible and keep you on that road. Well, welcome back, and I know we'll hear from you a little bit later, right after the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
And as you can see from our festive panel table tonight, the district's getting ready to celebrate College Month, which runs during the month of October. I want to thank Marsha McInnis Mitchell, the director of post-secondary partnerships and initiatives, for creating these posters, celebrating the alma maters of each of the committee members, as well as Superintendent Casellius. I know that the superintendent will have more to say about College Month a little bit later in the report. I do want to note, you know, Florida State, place that I, I attended college, we are now number 18 nationwide for public universities in the U.S. News and World Report, so it's something I'm very proud of and had almost nothing to do with. But still, it's nice to support your, your alma mater whenever you can. We'll begin now with the approval of minutes from the September 11th school committee meeting. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 11th meeting as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing on the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellius.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very excited today to be here with you and to share with you some updates of the, to the committee. Again, yes, it is, October is College Month. There's nothing more important than going to college or being prepared for your career, and we plan on doing a lot of work in our high schools and within our career centers and with our partners, such as the PIC. I was just with them this afternoon. I know Michael was there with me, so appreciate your presence there as well to demonstrate support for our partnerships in this really important endeavor. College Month is designed to encourage all students and their families to begin planning for life after high school and as early as possible, and to make sure that they know what resources are available to them. This month's events will highlight college affordability, college readiness, STEM activities during their STEM week. So, you'll get more information on that and the Eighth Annual Citywide College Career and Internship Fair at the Reggie Lewis Center on Saturday, October 26th, so I hope some of you will be able to join us. Today, when I was interviewed by Dahim and Kathleen, two wonderful students at Snowden, they asked me a question about how we were going to support our undocumented youth with college access. This is one way to be able to support youth and giving them more information and making them know what's available, but also possibly providing additional support and advocacy to be able to develop and find strategies to emulate a dream act here in Massachusetts. So, hopefully, that can be a moonshot, Mr. O'Neil. Also, this week, you'll get information and have already seen information about the DESI accountability results. We will present that to you this evening in detail. But to highlight just a few things on that, Nathan Hill Elementary in Roxbury and Windship Elementary in Brighton were designated schools of recognition, and we are super proud of them, so like to give them a round of applause. I was just out this morning celebrating at the Channing in Hyde Park and joined them and, and in the incredible work that they've done coming out of turnaround. So, we are very proud of the Channing, and so I'd like to give them a round of applause as well. And I'd just like to thank the teachers. I met with the head custodian, who everybody was raving about, and school secretary, who were just amazing, and I met some superstar parents as well there. And just what a wonderful team of individuals just getting it done for children and just so proud of them. And when I was there, they were talking about how it's not good enough, how they want to even do better for their children and just to continue on, and so I'm excited and anxious to watch them soar over the next several years. As you know, DESI is getting ready to do a district review. We've been in contact with their team, Russell Johnson, under the commissioner's team on our side, Corey Harris, chief of accountability, and our team in school transformation. And we are really working closely with them on this review in terms of the information that we will get in. I feel really honored that we'll be able to get, you know, as I go and visit all 125 schools, they're going to come in right alongside and go into 100 schools and get a real nice, deep look at our instruction, how schools are getting it done, data inquiry teams, how we're aligned to the standards, and just really trying to better understand where some gaps may be and where really we're seeing success so that we can replicate that success across schools. And so, I'm excited about that review, the partnership with the commissioner in order to move our schools and, and get even better results. As you know, we'll have a brief presentation by the city today on the budget and the, the Promise Act that is before. I want to thank our representatives at the State House and their hard work on this bill, and it is a good step forward for Boston Public Schools and continue to evaluate its impact on our students and are eager to work with the legislative colleagues here as this bill continues to move forward. Again, I've been going into schools and getting my sneakers busy, and so, since the start of school, I've visited 24 schools so far with a total, 20, 22, 24 schools totaling 42 schools altogether so far. These have been such informa, informational opportunities for me and have been just wonderful ways to meet the staff, speak to all of the teachers, get in there and meet children, and talk with the older students as well about their hopes and dreams and what they want to see. And what I can tell you is I see joyful places where teachers are working hard and where, where custodial staff and, and our school secretaries and our bus monitors and bus drivers are just trying to do the best by kids. And so, I'm just really excited about those visits and learning a lot about our needs and next steps. Additionally, beyond the school visits, as you know, I'm going out and visiting with community members and on my listening tour, and this has been also really, really good for me to hear what, what there's, what's on their mind. It's been authentic. That's been meaningful, and it, it's just great to learn more about the context of Boston and the different neighborhoods and what there is to offer and what's on parents' minds. I talked about some of those emerging themes the past couple of meetings in the, in the strategic planning meetings that we had, and I'll continue to bring that back to all of you as I continue to learn more in those meetings. Since the start of school, I've hosted and attended seven community meetings with hundreds of participants, and so far, I've had over 42 community meetings as well. Inclusionary Task Force update, we have been meeting. We had our latest meeting this past Monday, and that's moving along. We're looking at where we have inclusion at our schools, where the quality of that inclusion, the staffing model, what would be required if we wanted to expand inclusionary options, what kind of information would need to be provided to teachers, and then where, where might we find the resources and how would we make those recommendations? So, that's moving along nicely, and that, of course, is the work that we're doing in collaboration with the teachers' union. I want to provide for you a testing update. Several days ago, I sent you a memo that I gave to school principals at their principal training, as well as sending home a note to families about some changes in testing. We will have the I S E E exam on November 7th. As you know, prior to my arrival, the school committee with the previous superintendent had decided to provide the I S E E test in schools for all sixth graders. And so, we will be doing that and working on those protocols all through this whole month to make sure that that is smooth. Also, the Terranova, I did some deep analysis on the Terranova test and made the decision to provide the test to all third graders so that they could access the A W C classes, but make it optional for fourth and fifth graders. We were testing about 8,000 students in grades four and five, and there were less than 100 students who were accessing the program after grade three. And so, if students still want to access the program in grade four or five, they can do so optionally and take the test optionally with the, right there at the school. I also am no longer mandating end-of-course exams, and those are optional for our school leaders because they get the test results way too late for it to be used for instruction. And this way, then, we can give back time for instruction to actually happen in schools. I want to be able to provide you a little bit of an update on transportation. As you know, we have had some difficulty with our transportation, and I wanted to provide with you some progress around it. We've seen steady improvement since the beginning of the school year in our efforts to increase the number of buses arriving to our schools before the bell and in transporting students, students home on time safely and at the end of the day. In recent days, on-time performance is approximately 81% in the morning and approximately 82% in the afternoon, which is an increase of about 14% and 9% respectively since the first week of school. 96% of our buses arrive within 15 minutes of their planned arrival time and 99% within 30 minutes of planned arrival. While the numbers are headed in the right direction, I'm still not satisfied that we are meeting the standard that our families deserve. We certainly are not meeting the standard that satisfies me. I believe transportation cannot be fixed in a silo, but we also know that there are improvements that can be made to strengthen our level of service in this department. To that end, tonight, I'm informing you that I have retained an expert on school transportation to conduct a complete review of our transportation infrastructure and contracting and communications to advise us on the ways that we can improve. I've contracted with Michael Turza. He's a retired senior-level manager who brings 30 years of experience to this work. He will consult with the district to identify where our systems need to be improved. He retired in 2005 after a distinguished career spanning decades with the Milwaukee, Wisconsin Public Schools, a district serving more than 80,000 students in 169 schools. He comes highly recommended by the Council of Great City Schools, which was, which will also be providing us support and technical assistance during this review. We cannot be satisfied with buses arriving to school after the bell or with students getting home late in the afternoon. We can and must do better, and I'm committed to putting the resources in place to bring about significant improvement to meet the standard our students and our families want and that they deserve. Ending on a high note, as you know, I've been working on attendance, and so, last week, our average attendance was 93.4 and today was 93.13. So, we are going to continue to encourage our students to achieve and to go after chronic attendance, and we have a process in place now with our school leaders and our school teams when students are chronically absent. Thank you, and that ends my report.
Well, thank you very much, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to members for questions and discussion. Mr. O'Neil.
So, Superintendent, first of all, thank you. I appreciate your attention to transportation. I know you have been keenly focused on this, and I'm, and I'm glad you're just not saying that's not good enough, but actually doing something about it. So, bringing in an outside, outside expert to look at this, enlisting the support of the Council of Great City Schools, who will bring a, a whole bunch of experts to the table for us, is proactive on your part. It was your decision to do it, to reach out to them, so thank you for that. And also, I really appreciate now that you're looking at the overall absenteeism. I look forward to having a future conversation with you, particularly about our students who are chronically absent. I know you're very focused on it. You had the doorknocking campaign. Would love to see us do this regularly, but also, there are other strategies that could be brought to bear that have worked in other cities about bringing, bringing the, the fact, a lot of parents on a way that their student are chronically absent. So, I'd love to see ways that we can think about that creatively. And on two other matters, again, my compliments to you and your team. Last, at our last school committee meeting, we had several, several parents speak, and though I know you were fairly quiet that day, I'm really fascinated to see and appreciate that you very specifically followed up with Ms. Price, who was talking about transportation for her child, and she was the one who had said she had five recommendations. And I'm glad to see you and your team talk with her, talk through those recommendations seriously and engage with her quite a bit, in addition to solving the individual problem. So, between that and Ms. Gaston, the parent who spoke about the code of conduct issue at Up Academy, again, your team engaged with her and really dug in. So, I just, I'm seeing, I'm starting to see a pattern of you're not just listening, but you're hearing and engaging and trying to solve problems and thinking about what that means as a big picture, so thank you for that. Go ahead. I have one more comment, but go ahead.
I just want to say also, I took the name of that parent, and I'm going to have the mic talk to her directly.
Oh.
Turza.
Which, which was that?
Transportation.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that was Ms., I thought it was Ms. Price who spoke last week. Right. Okay, great. Oh, you're going to have the transportation consultant speak with her about her recommendations. Excellent. And lastly, I really appreciated that you were at the Channing this morning and celebrating with them, and I love the fact that you called out the school custodian and the school secretary, both of whom are fantastic there. The teachers have done an amazing job. We've been waiting for this, for the state to recognize the work that's been going on. Those of us in BPS know it, have seen it for a couple of years. The parents have seen it in the selection of the school, and now the state data has caught up. But that all starts with leadership, and I have to call out Principal Pignato, the amazing principal there. Mr. Taylor, I see you in the back of the room. You remember five, what is it, five years ago, you and I were there when she had just started after the turnaround status, and she's very quiet and soft-spoken, but I've always said she has a backbone of steel, and you can see it when you work with her, and I am so happy, yes, for the entire team there, but particularly for her because it starts with leadership and the belief she has in those Channing students and what she can provide for them, and I'm so delighted for them, and I want particularly to call her out for the hard work, so, and I know you saw her today.
Yeah, she was amazing. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Ms. Robinson.
I just wanted to ask a question about attendance at the community meetings as you've been going around. Have you seen a variety of people coming out? Has attendance been robust or?
Yes, good question. It has been very robust. It's been really, really, especially at the community meetings, they've been well-attended and standing room. We had takeout chairs and Charleston, put them in. The parent council meetings, you know, they're smaller meetings with parent council, obviously, because they're parent council. But yeah, the St. Stevens meetings, the Matapan, the Charlestown meetings, they were very well, very well-attended.
Thank you.
Mr. Tran.
First of all, I would like to echo my colleague, Mr. O'Neil, in thanking you for all the great work that you've done regarding transportation. My, my specific question is that the expert you are retaining, is there a timeline as to when he would submit his proposal on, on the changes?
Yeah, Mr. Tran, thank you. That's a really good question. So, when I was actually talking to him, the one thing I loved was that he wanted to come only if he could stay until there was a successful implementation through next year. I thought that was just a sign to his integrity, right? So, he's going to be here. There might be some quick things that we can change to kind of make it better short-term, but then the longer-term range of having a successful opening for the school year. So, he'll be with us the whole year. I think it's two to three days a week, every other week.
Thank you.
But we'll be working out his schedule.
Mr. Tran, anything else?
That's, that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tran. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank our colleague, Ms. Robinson, for stepping up as well and serving on the district wellness council. Thank you, even though you feel under the weather today. It's no reflection on your service, of course, and we thank you for representing the committee on that council. I also wanted to give a little bit of an update to folks that may have missed a, a trip that we approved during our retreat in August. We approved a very short order, a, a trip that came up very fast for a number of students at the Latin School, who were our Quiz Bowl champions in the W G B H Quiz Bowl earlier this year. Those students were then invited to attend the International Science Olympiad. Those students were then invited to attend the International Science Olympiad in Moscow, and they did that at the end of August, and I think they missed the first couple of days of school in September as well. They competed very hard, they gave it their all, and two of the members of the team brought home bronze medals in the physics competition, physics portion of the competition. And this truly was an International Olympiad. There were a number of other cities and towns, both locally, nationally, and internationally competing. I know locally Brookline and Newton sent teams, and there were teams from New York, Los Angeles, and across the country, and again, across the world. So we salute that team and congratulate them for their efforts. Okay, so if there's no other further questions or comments, I will ask for a motion to receive the superintendent's report as submitted. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, does a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Here, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the report is approved. So before we now move on to public comment, I'm going to ask Ms. Reyes to give us a few additional thoughts of hers, before we move back into the regular process of having a BSAC report every other meeting.
Yeah, so this week, I want to share some recruitment updates with the committee. Before I dive into that, I'd like to thank Dr. Casalias and the academic superintendents for all of their support during this year's recruitment efforts. I apologize. At the beginning of September, BSAC staff revamped and launched their recruitment efforts. The strategy revolves around communication with school leaders and staff, school visits, presentations to students, meeting with academics, superintendents, and PD presentations to headmasters. Outreach included details about student engagement and leadership opportunities such as BSAC, student government, school site council, JIBRAC, and the new superintendent student executive We are wrapping up the first round of recruitment efforts this week in preparation for our first meeting next week. We have much success, we have had much success with many schools responding and having BSAC staff visit schools. However, due to the challenge of a busy start of the year, not all schools have been so responsive. So though BSAC is sensitive to said challenge, we wanted to remind school leaders of the BSAC opportunity, along with other leadership structures urging them for their cooperation. So we want to thank those schools that have worked with us thus far to engage their students, and the schools that we look forward to connecting with are Margarita Muniz Academy, East Boston High, Excel High, Community Academy, Community Academy of Science and Health, Tech Boston, and the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. Some important dates that I'd like to share are, the first BSAC meeting of the year is next Monday, September thirtieth, September thirtieth. Our four days of onboarding and training are Monday, October seventh, through Thursday, October tenth. Over those four days, we will have orientation and community building activities, some training and project selection. The JIBRAC meeting, the first meeting of the year at Desi and Malden is Thursday, October third, twenty-ninth of this year, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Reyes, and if you wouldn't mind, that list you read off of the schools that you're looking to recruit new members at, if you would share that with Ms. Sullivan, so she can distribute that to the, the membership, we'll, we'll be sure to follow up with the school leaders. Well, thank you. Move on now to public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Do we have a chance to ask questions?
Oh, well, of course. Who am I? Please, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Reyes, thank you for that message, and I just want to be clear on what you said, that the schools that you were just encouraging to round out their participation, is that how you phrased it?
Yeah, to respond to us.
So the ones you're still just waiting to finish, the recruitment effort that's surely underway at Margarita Muniz, East Boston High School, Excel High School, Community Academy, CASH, Tech Boston, and the Kennedy Academy of Health Careers?
Yeah.
Excellent. Those are the seven that we just need to hear their final answers back.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I see the high school superintendents nodding that they got it. Yep.
But that means all the other schools have now been working to submit students to be part of BSAC?
Yes.
That's fantastic. Thank you to the school leaders for doing that. Love to have BSAC represent all of our high schools.
Absolutely. Big goal.
Thank you. Thank you much again, Ms. Reyes, and if there aren't any other further questions, we'll move on to public comment. Okay, Ms. Sullivan, general public comment, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have one minute remaining and then thirty seconds. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have seven speakers this evening, beginning with our Boston City Councilor, Anisa Asabi George, and she'll be followed by David Nave and Travis Marshall.
Welcome, Counselor.
Good evening.
Congratulations on your win last evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Casalias, Chairman LaCanto, and members of the school committee. My name is Anisa Asabi George, and I am Boston City Councilor at large and chair of the Committee on Education. I, along with BTU members, teachers, parents, students, and advocates, were extremely excited to hear that there would be an increase in school emotional support specialists in our schools this year throughout last year's budget process. We all successfully advocated for full-time nurses to be in all of our schools, an important achievement after years of advocacy, and we were brimming with hope that twenty-three additional licensed mental health professionals would also be reaching our students this year. However, it has been reported that we have not yet hired a single additional mental health professional, and plan to not hire all twenty-three providers, as celebrated in this last budget approved by the Boston City Council. This is very disappointing. We had an intensive budget review process between the city council and the Boston Public Schools, during which we spent hours discussing the importance of hiring student-facing social and emotional support specialists. We specifically allocated funding for the purpose of hiring these professionals. Mental health professionals are urgently needed in our schools, so our teachers can focus on academics and our kids on learning. At my hearing on social emotional support specialists, we learned from the administration that one in five of our students have experienced at least one adverse childhood experience. Mental health professionals have to build relationships with these children, with our children. Building relationships takes time. We need to move quickly to hire these mental health professionals to work in our schools, reaching our most vulnerable students. I understand that all schools have access to school psychologists and other professionals, but most of these full-time providers are split between two or three schools. If a student is in crisis or on the verge of a crisis, they should be able to access support. We need to increase the amount of time each of our school psychologists and mental health providers can spend in any single school. I supported an education budget this past June because it reflected an investment in the resources important to our kids. Let's please realize that commitment to our students and to our school community this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Nave. He'll be followed by Travis Marshall and Becky Quinn.
Good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, everyone. I didn't come here tonight to get into the dynamics of certain things that we've been speaking about for about eighteen months now, a couple of years, and we are still at that result. But first and foremost, I'd like to say to the superintendent, outstanding presentation, not on the budget pieces and things, but recognizing the people in the smaller parts of our schools and things like that. I, I find that to have heart. You have to have heart to be in that chair, not, not just to be business. This isn't a business, this takes compassion. As Counselor said, the dynamics of the emotional piece is, is overwhelming today. Our children face being shot on a regular basis every day. The dangers are out there. Their safe haven is a school. Unfortunately, Mike Dillon was excluded from that protection, and then went in school, did not receive protection, and then went in school, false police reports written about him, and then went in school, police reports disappeared, then went in school, accused of many things, and now I got, the most recent email I received was, I needed a court audit of video, see videos that were conduct matters. Well, people laughed. That video camera has some serious faces watching me tonight, okay? I go to the Golden Globe, I go everywhere. I have no problem knocking on a door, and I am consistent. This is just a piece of nothing more than, than, you know, this was given to me by a previous mayor, and this is when we, that's my Dillon, that's the face, all right? He's younger. And this here is the Roger Clapp innovation, and that's, God rest his soul, Mayor Menino, there's the owner where, of Jordan's Furniture, the Dr. Johnson, and myself. That's when we raised fifty thousand that day. And this is a nineteen-twenty-one original Boston School Committee minutes, and I have the whole encyclopedia given to me by the mayor. I wanted to be in them chairs. I love helping children. I will advocate for any child, and the things that have happened to my son might not have been as extreme to other kids, but this has been going on for years. We do not take children out of mainstream, throw them in a room with four or five other kids because of some small dynamics. That should be a law that it must take every, you must go through every single route to make sure things are correct before an alternative. A child loses their social skills, their discipline, their, their connection to older students on getting right things. You destroyed my child's high school education from day one. And unfortunately, it was the interim, not you, Superintendent, at all. I hear your heart. We come from the same background, projects, me too, I've seen that segment, outstanding, you know? And I love that you went and seen all the schools and everything. But unfortunately, people in authority, when things are brought to them in criminal matters, false reports, and altering documents, well, then the public schools lose their immunity.
Mr. Nave.
And it's called corruption. Okay? Now, I was advised tonight to come in plainclothes because I got to stop wearing suits to this meeting because I'm not defining myself, I'm not separating myself from somebody in a, in a position of, of anything that would wear a suit. I need to look like a parent. I'm a single father of four boys, and have had some traumas with my other boys, but again, back to the counselor. Counseling.
Mr. Nave, just a moment.
What?
You're past your time. Could you please summarize your statement so that we can move on?
Okay, I thought that was Ms. Sullivan's job, not yours, because they're tired of you telling me to be quiet.
Mr. Nave.
No.
Mr. Nave.
I'm past my three minutes. Did you tell me thirty seconds?
Yes, sorry.
All right, then, all right, I apologize, dear, I didn't hear you. All right, well, here it is in a nutshell, okay? I was advised to go to the district attorney's office, and that's what I intend to do, okay? It starts from the chief of staff, who directed it down. You are involved, Mr. Chairman, for protecting anyone who sat in, in any position. That's called corruption.
Thank you.
Be prepared.
Thank you.
Don't thank me.
Thank you.
Oh, this, you know what this is? This is Gillan's stress ball. You destroyed a fifteen-year-old child's education. He's seventeen, he still wants to go to school, sir. You have children, they're in BPS. Are you a dad or a father? I'm a dad.
Thank you, Mr. Nave.
Thank you? I wouldn't thank me for the life of you. Because I'm telling you, hundred and eighty miles an hour I'm coming, and everything is correct, and it's all on documents, your documents.
Ms. Sullivan, who's the next speaker?
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Travis Marshall. He'll be followed by Becky Quinn and Laura Carroll.
Good evening, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Travis Marshall. I'm a parent of two students at the Bates School and a member of the parent advocacy group, Quest. I'm here tonight to refer back to something Ms. Oliver Davila mentioned at the last meeting about grants and private fundraising for individual Boston Public Schools. We live in a city with a staggering racial wealth gap, with schools that are increasingly segregated under the home-based assignment system and selective missions, and in this system where most school budgets struggle to provide even the basics, family councils, nonprofit partners, and alumni associations work to raise additional funds for music and art programs, libraries, and even non-union staff. But in our vastly unequal city, there are some schools that raise hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, capital campaigns raising millions, often linked to the wealth of their families and alumni. There are some schools with paid staff positions dedicated to development, and there are many more schools without any organized fundraising at all, where students don't come from privilege, where families don't have the means to donate hundreds of dollars a year, where teachers spend their own money and hustle for Donors Choose projects to ensure their students get a fraction of the resources that they deserve. If we profess to promote equity in BPS, we need to examine this glaring disparity in extra-budgetary fundraising between schools. We shouldn't let difficult politics stand in the way of ensuring our most disadvantaged students receive a rich and well-rounded education beyond just the bare bones. All Boston children deserve libraries, arts and programming, and enrichment, regardless of where they live or the wealth of their families. Just as this committee has advocated for the State Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations on the grounds of equity in the Commonwealth, it must continue that mission within our own district. I'm not speaking tonight in favor of any particular policy prescription, but I hope that this year there'll be a robust discussion on the various ways we can budget to remedy this systemic inequity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next, we'll hear from Becky Quinn, followed by Laura Carroll and Robert Jenkins.
Good evening, Ms. Quinn.
Hi there. My name's Becky Quinn. I'm a teacher at Orchard Gardens, and I teach SLIF, so it's a classroom of students who have significant, excuse me, who have significant, limited, interrupted, formal education. All my students are from Cape Verde, and they're newcomers. They're in third, fourth, and fifth grade, we're a self-contained classroom, and so they're learning English, and they're also learning how to be a student, and how to be in school, and also how to live in the United States. So I'm, I'm here to talk about City Sprouts and the impact that it's had on my classroom in the last couple of years, and just wanted to say that, you know, my, my class of students, we get to meet them exactly where they are, and we get to provide exactly what they need, and it feels like a little family because we spend so much time together over three years, and I'm working on my Cape Verdean Creole. We've had the pleasure of working with City Sprouts the last few years, and it really is such a joy. We have had the chance to build common experiences that we can refer to throughout the school year, and it really allows my students to shine in different ways from what we might see in the classroom. It helps them build the vocabulary, and it keeps their engagement really high. It also fosters their curiosity. They're, they love to get their hands dirty, they'll dig in the compost pile so they can hold a worm. A highlight for us is always the yearly apple cider making. Last year, we, we were able to take pictures of all our students and incorporate that into our writing curriculum and our classroom discussions, and students were able to really reflect on that all year, and it, it gave us something in common to discuss. They're so excited for another year in the garden, and we've already been out there a couple of times, and so I just wanted to talk about the impact that it's had on our class, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn, and thank you for bringing along your executive director from City Sprouts, Ms. Hershey, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Carroll. She'll be followed by Robert Jenkins and Kelly Wang.
Good evening, Ms. Carroll.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent and committee members. My name is Laura Carroll. I'm a Charlestown resident, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the Harbor Point Community Task Force. I'm a lawyer downtown and have represented them for some time on a pro bono basis. I'm here to express the, the task force, which you probably all know, but is the group representing I'm here to express the Task Force, which you probably all know, but is the group representing the residents of the Harbor Point Development, which, I know the superintendent's relatively new to Boston, but is on the harbor side of I-93 in Dorchester. And it's a very successful mixed-income development. Most of the children who live there are low-income. The only schools in walking, BPS schools within walking distance are the Dever Elementary School and the McCormick, which is currently a middle school. The Harbor Point Task Force was very excited to hear about the Build BPS plans for the McCormick and the Dever, but the Dever, as we, according to what's been reported, will expand to grade six, and then the McCormick will be expanded to, instead of being a six-to-eight school, it will become a seven-through-12. And the residents with school-age students are very excited at the possibility that they're now going to have a high school within walking distance for their children. Because of its location, it's really cut off. There's the highway, there's the T station, and there isn't really anything else. A lucky few might get into BC High, but other than that, you know, there isn't really anything very local for them. The reason for our concern is about a year and a half ago, this committee, well prior to the Build BPS announcement, approved a resolution for the playing fields, the athletic fields next to the McCormick School, which are not in great condition. And the resolution was for Department of Neighborhood Development to look into possible ways to improve them. And in fact, Task Force members came to this committee talking about their plans, what could be done for the school.
20 seconds? 20 seconds?
Okay, sorry. We've just learned that an RFP was issued this past summer. It was not given to the Task Force. We've not found anyone else that received it other than the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester. Not surprisingly, only one response to the RFP, we understand, was received from the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester. The plan is to build a very impressive-looking athletic building that will occupy the entire playing fields next to the McCormick School. We are not, no one's objecting to the attractiveness of the building, but the programming inside is for little kids. It's for your typical Boys and Girls Club members. It's going to have a children-sized soccer field, nothing that's high school size, nothing that's even really middle school size, and it will occupy the entire playing fields.
Ms. Carroll.
We're upset about the process as well as the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. And if you have additional information you want to share with us, you can certainly send a letter to Ms. Sullivan, it'll be circulated with the committee.
Well, we will do so. We just got information on this, I'd say, within the last 24 hours, so.
Thank you.
I thought showing up in person was something, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Next, we'll hear from Robert Jenkins, and he'll be followed by Kelly Wang.
Hello, Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening. I'm back here again, so. I would like to say one thing off the bat. Superintendent Gasolius, I've been out to a number of the events, including Matterpan, which is my neighborhood, and she was very well-received. What I saw was new parents, not your usual suspects. And as you know, in Matterpan, we've had major issues with the closing of the Matterpan, so whatever. But she's well-received, and we will invite her back next time, even though we know it's a hike for her. But her enthusiasm, and I don't know how she does it, you know, having a long day of school and then dealing with a bowling building and down, I mean, back-to-back. I was at two of the meetings, and they were very well-attended. People that normally don't go out, so the enthusiasm and the new, you know, reigns, the person in charge is very good. But I'm here tonight to talk about athletics. I am an official for the IAFO, which is the Association of Independent Football Officials. The MIAA, which is the Massachusetts Intergalactic Athletic Association, has, Boston was the last, Boston and Texas were the last two states that follow NCAA rules. They have now gone to Federation, which is far more dangerous than NCAA rules. And I know that it's no disrespect to the Athletic Department of the City of Boston because this was put upon us to learn, as a football official, well over 200 new rules and regulations, and that a lot of coaches and athletic directors do not know all of the rules. Things that were allowed under the NCAA are not allowed under Federation, which is very detrimental, again, because of the lack of preparedness. We asked for them to gradually put this system in place, they have not done that. So just wanted to put, you know, put it to the school committee, and so that you guys have the power to talk to the mayor, to talk to state representatives. I'm here because, you know, I make, you know, I, it's not a living, I love, you know, doing what I do, but it has, there's a safety factor to it. And also to the factor of our athletic program. There are a number of schools that did not field a varsity football team. And that I have really strong issues over because we are one of the richest cities, not in the nation, but in the country. We have colleges, we have major sports teams, we have major partners who can help out. I want our kids, when I was growing up, we, and I was at Madison, we had a hockey team. All sports were covered. Not every kid is going to be a LeBron James or Tom Brady or, you know, any of the Bruins. They're not going to do that. And I know Dr. Gasolius loves hockey, but anyway, you know, Minnesota, you know, boom. It's just that we have to offer more sports. I mean, you know, for, with the lack of, the talk of cutting middle schools out. Our students need socially-emotional learning. A lot of students need to be involved, and I will definitely work with Dr. Gasolius in her office on bringing in partners. I was just with a major partner the other day that would love to come in, has a fantastic program that's been in a number of other states, but I know where to find her, and I have no problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Next, we'll hear from Kelly Wang.
Good evening, Ms. Wang.
Hello. Hi, hi, I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm sorry, I just say, good evening. With the following sign, our parents of Josiah Quincy Elementary School, we are very disappointed at BPS, at the elementary teachers, the OEL departments, and principals, criteria school of Josiah Quincy Elementary Schools, for the placement of our second language learners, EL students, who according to their need, but the convenience of the schools, some students who should accept those language programs are forced to stay, some who should remind us, forced to accept those programs. Most of our students are all second languages, learn and have to bring assignments to the SEI Chinese languages, special programs at Josiah Quincy Elementary. The SEI's program is very similar to the former translation Chinese bilingual programs. Most of our children have been in the programs since kindergarten, every junior. The EL students have to take the VDS access test to see the progress of their English language skill. Then those languages are acquainted since the 80s, was need with parents in June to explain the test, and this determines the children's placements according to the access test score. Children who reach English level development ELD, 4S and 5S, can accept the SEI's programs. The means to is into the general classroom, analysis, a parent of ESL support daily. However, the placement was chaotic. Finally, I have to, I have to mention the SEI seats in each grade level at Josiah Quincy School. There was 50 SEI seats for each grade levels, from K-2 to third grade and 25 SEI seats for grades and 25 seats for grade five, usually offers their grades. A lot of children are ready to missing back to the general. Some ever get into the advanced work classes. Yet, this year, this school, yes, there is only 25 SEI seats for grade three. So what happens to the others 25? They are being pushed to general CDs back in June. Parents meet with home, teachers and the 80s teams, who explains to parents who, parents what programs their children will be placed in basis on the test score. The third grade, well, the third grade EL students were told that they would be in SEI's class, and the fourth grade EL students were told that they will be going to general. When September comes, without any warning or explanation, the grades who should be in SEI are being placed in general, and fourth grades who should be in general are in SEI's classes, taking always the seats of those who need them. In conclusions, we feel BPS, the OEL departments and principal school were very disrespectful to those grades of parents and place their children's, children's basis on it, but the conveniences of the school to make matters worse is when parents ask to make with the school administration to resolve the issues, parents were often intimidated by the schools during the meeting. It is a parents, then a team of school staff and administrators will be in the meetings, and the parents is often able, like. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Wang. And if you, I see you're reading from something that's printed. If you wouldn't mind sharing a copy of that with Ms. Sullivan, she can distribute it to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Priya Talidi is in the back over here, who can speak to you as well. Dr. Priya Talidi, thank you. So good to meet you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $1,372,379. I'll open it up now to members of the committee for questions or discussion.
One quick question.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes, I just have a question about, hang on one second, the early grades literacy program. Because it's for one school, the content K to H, and it's about, I think, new assessments and testing, and my question is, is this the only school in this particular program? And how are the assessments that they're going to be given compared to the general assessments that students would normally take within those grades? Are they replacing? What's the, sort of, the status around this particular project?
I wonder if we could have staff come up and speak to that grant specifically.
Yeah.
Welcome, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening. I actually do not have that information with me, but I'm happy to respond to you at a later date, as soon as I get that.
All right, thank you.
You'll be able to follow up after the meeting over email.
I do owe you a response from last school committee's meeting as well, on Title II, so I'll send you both together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil.
Just a, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question about the Junior ROTC program grant, and I'm wondering, is this an expansion at all? Is this more schools? Or is this the existing schools that already have the programs? And do we know approximately how many students in total are involved in this? Which, by the way, you know, outstanding programs. When we visit the schools and the young students who are in the Junior ROTC program are always, you know, very impressive young men and women. And so I'm just wondering, is this an expansion?
These are the same current sites, so there is no expansion, but the number of students I'll have to get back to you on.
Number of students is what?
The number of students I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
But it's the same sites as last year.
Same sites as last year. Okay, great. And, you know, talk with a number of them. I'm also, I'm just very pleased, I want to compliment that I'm glad Playball Foundation is in. We actually asked the athletic director about it last time, if the plans were, and he said it'd be coming in, so I'm delighted to see. Is this trying to cover all students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? Do we know?
I think Avery's here, yeah. Avery is here, he could respond.
Oh, there he is. I feel like this is repetitive from the question I asked you two weeks ago, when you said it would be coming, so.
No, that will not cover all kids, sixth through eighth. It's targeted schools that we've worked with in previous years.
Yep.
With the opportunity, I believe, to talk with Playball around expansion where there's opportunities to do so.
Okay, I think they're very interested in trying to cover all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And between that and what scholar athletes do for our high school students, that would be great. You know, as we heard from one of the speakers earlier today, athletics is so important. So I think, I do think, Superintendent, that Playball would be very interested in having programs with us for all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, if we can figure out how to make that happen.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Yeah, we have to work out ways to take advantage of the opportunity, but appreciate it.
Glad to help if there's a way I can help.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, members, one of the things I am learning and working toward is getting an understanding of all the granting.
Yep.
Into the Boston public schools. There are, as you can imagine, hundreds, if not thousands. And so I have pages and pages of grants that I am going through right now, and as they come along, some of these are, have been historically within our schools already, so I'm trying to see where they're at within our schools and understand better the equity pieces about where they are, and then have that be part of our budgeting process going forward. So on these particular grants, we'll get you the more information, but overall, I plan on a future committee agenda item to unpack, I like to say, all of the grants, granting, and come with recommendations to the school committee around the granting and the fundraising processes that are happening in the school, so that they're more equitable.
So Playball Foundation is a foundation that is not just in Boston, and they are focused on middle school athletics, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. It is my understanding, and they would be delighted to put programs in every single one of our high schools, so in our middle school population, so that if it's K to eight, they can help with sixth, seventh, and eighth. If it's a seven-through-12, they can help with seventh and eighth grade. And they would, they are interested in, because they also believe in the equity issue, and they would love to be able to help serve all of our students that are in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
We also have Playworks that we partner with, and we also partner with Boys and Girls Clubs and other YMCA's, and so just trying to get a full understanding of all of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Thank you, Superintendent. Well, hearing no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Tron. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any discussion, or, excuse me, any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our final action item this evening, Mr. Esdale, you shouldn't have left the dais. We're going to be approving the new memberships for the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. You recall that at our last meeting, Mr. Esdale had presented a request for the approval of new MIAA memberships for the Dearborn STEM Academy, the Kennedy Academy for Health and Science Careers, and the Alternative School Network. Are there any further questions from the committee? If there's nothing further, then I'll now entertain a motion to approve the MIAA memberships as presented. Thank you, Mr. Tron. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to that motion? Uh, is there any discussion or objection to that motion? Uh, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and, and thank you once again, Mr. Esdale, for pushing for new memberships on behalf, behalf of our schools. Uh, it goes along with the comments you've heard earlier about, uh, creating more equity for, uh, access to athletics and wellness across our schools, and we greatly appreciate your work here. Uh, we'll move on now to our first report, which is a briefing on the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, as many observers are aware, last week, the House and Senate, uh, released, excuse me, the Massachusetts House and Senate, uh, Joint Committee on Education released the proposed act, which communities around the Commonwealth have anticipated for some time. You recall also that earlier this year, the committee issued a resolution calling for any new state education funding formula to reflect the needs of Boston students. We're excited by the meaningful progress towards fulfilling these needs that are represented by the bill, and we thank the joint committee's co-chairs, Representative Alice Peish of Wellesley and Senator Jason Lewis of Melrose, for meeting with the committee, with district and city representatives on a number of occasions over the cat, the course of the last year, to hear about these specific needs in Boston and those needs that are reflected in many other similar communities across the Commonwealth. This bill, simply put, reflects the needs of low-income students, who make up seventy-five percent of the nearly fifty-seven thousand students that are enrolled in B P S. And while we continue to work with the legislature to refine a final bill, we extend our deep appreciation to the joint committee co-chairs, as well as Speaker DeLeo and Senate President Spilka, for their work towards an equitable education funding solution that serves all communities across the Commonwealth. So, members, we have included in your packets tonight, uh, the joint committee's summary of the Student Opportunity Act and an F A Q. And I just want to point out for folks that are here, uh, there were a couple of these handouts, uh, on the, uh, the table outside. Uh, these are the documents that were distributed by, uh, the Joint Committee on Education last year, uh, excuse me, last week. Um, and they're also accessible on the joint committee's website. Uh, and you can, uh, access those at your leisure. So at this time, um, we have with us the city's budget director, Mr. Justin Starrett, who's graciously agreed to, uh, come at, at quick notice, uh, with the, uh, the bill being, um, released late last week, to give us the initial first take on what the bill, what the bill entails, what it means for Boston, and how we can help, uh, further support its passage, and any changes that might be beneficial to the city and its students. So, Mr. Starrett, welcome, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that was a great primer. I, I don't even know if I have to be here anymore, actually. But, uh, as you mentioned, my name is Justin Starrett. I'm the city of Boston's budget director. I've been in front of you a few times over the past year. Uh, in fact, I, I think back fondly at the meeting with B S A C, where we had the, um, interim superintendent and a host of other people from the state up to talk about this bill, and, and it feels like that was just yesterday, and, and we've come so far, and in terms of new progress on it. So we're, uh, excited to be here today and excited to, uh, to talk about it. As you mentioned, uh, for the past five years, the city, B P S, teachers, staff, parents, and students from around Boston and the Commonwealth, uh, have been advocating on behalf of legislation that changes state funding, uh, for communities like the city of Boston, and better reflect the needs of those students and prepares them for a 21st century education. Uh, for the city, there were two really core principles that any bill, um, that came out of committee, uh, had to have for us to support. One would be fully implementing the foundation budget review recommendations in a way that would ensure that districts that educate the neediest students in the Commonwealth, like Boston, would benefit through additional chapter seventy dollars. And two, the second part, recognizing that, uh, there was a growing and uncapped cost of charter school tuition that the city of Boston is dealing with, and there had been chronic underfunding of the charter school reimbursement line item. Uh, and the effects that that had on the, the funding available back to districts were two really core tenants of any bill that came out of committee, um, would need to have in order for us to support. Uh, and as you mentioned, there were several bills filed this session, one by the governor, one by the House, one by the Senate. Uh, and as you mentioned, last week, the, the Joint Committee on Education released, uh, the Student Opportunity Act, which we've spent, my office has spent the last forty-eight to seventy-two hours digesting and understanding and running different scenarios about what it might look like for the city of Boston. Um, and while you mentioned, there's still a wrong load, a, a long road ahead. Um, they have to pass the bill, they have to implement the bill, and finally, they have to fund the bill. And those are things that are going to require a tremendous amount of advocacy from the groups who we brought together around the Promise Act to continue to, to push forward to. Uh, but the Student Opportunity Act is a good step in the right direction to fundamentally change the trajectory of state funding for Boston schools and students, exactly in the, in the light that Mayor Walsh and the B P S community have been advocating for. So we're excited about that. Um, the bill, when fully implemented over the next seven years, will ensure that Boston benefits from the foundation budget changes in the sense of new chapter seventy funding, which was, uh, not only not the case with the status quo, but not the case with other bills that were being considered. So we, we checked that off as a huge win for the city. Uh, and frankly, there is a, uh, a new commitment and a sort of, uh, reinvigoration of the original promise, uh, of the charter school expansion of 2010, where the legislature is committing to fully fund charter school reimbursement in three years, and then going forward, fully fund it, uh, completely. So that is something that, um, we have been advocating for, B P S has been advocating for, a lot of folks have been advocating for, uh, over the past few years, and we really view this as a, a reflection of that advocacy. So those two components represent the two main pillars of education finance reform for the city of Boston, and, um, we are excited that the, they include, uh, those two as, as really important provisions. Uh, while this bill provides the framework for an improved state funding landscape, we will need to remain vigilant as the, and hold the state accountable, frankly, um, during their annual budget process, as they, uh, as we make sure that they uphold their end of the bargain. This is a framework bill at the end of the day. This is going to lay out the next seven years of funding, both from a charter school perspective and from a chapter seventy perspective, and it's going to require, um, a lot of advocacy to make sure that the state upholds their end of the bargain when it comes to funding. Um, as I mentioned, as you mentioned, um, Chairman, there are other, uh, core funding, um, components of the bill that we think that actually are going to benefit the district as well. They include changes to the Special Education Circuit Breaker, which is a grant that, um, the city receives or the district receives. Expansion of the school building authority, so they actually expanded the borrowing capacity of the school building authority. So as we, um, continue to rebuild schools in the city of Boston, that's going to help us. And then finally, targeted grant funding, which I know, um, uh, the city has been able, the city and B P S has been able to access in the past. There is additional funding set aside for that. So those are all positives, we think, for the city, and something that we're going to continue to work with, uh, the B P S finance team, to make sure that, um, we're accessing and are, are sort of helping to fund the, the school system. Uh, we're also going to have to be mindful of some of the new accountability components in there. So, uh, as a lot of you know, there's new data sharing requirements and new reporting requirements that are included in the bill, and we need to take steps right now, and we need to probably make investments right now to make sure that we're going to be compliant with Desi's new, uh, reporting requirements over the next few months. Um, and, and as far as next steps go, I think we're, we're excited to continue the conversation. Um, this bill was announced jointly between the House and Senate, who will be proceeding to final votes in the near future, and ultimately, this bill will head to the governor's desk for signature. Uh, as you mentioned, I want to thank Speaker DeLeo, President Spilka, Chairs Peish and Lewis, and the Boston delegation, uh, for listening and really prioritizing our concerns over that time period. Uh, we urge B P S, the school committee, teachers, and students to continue their advocacy to ensure that this bill is not only passed, but fully implemented and fully funded, not only this year, but for the seven years of the next rollout. I want to thank the district, I want to thank the school committee, I want to thank the city council, Councilor Sabby George, um, was a vocal advocate for that. I want to thank B S A C, I want to thank the B T U, um, for their leadership on getting Boston's point of view heard up on Beacon Hill. Oftentimes, uh, you know, Boston asks for things up on Beacon Hill in a con fall on deaf ears, but I think there's a really good chorus of advocacy, uh, across the spectrum, and, um, I think the time and energy spent on that advocacy resulted in real progress in the Student Opportunity Act, um, which finally provides a much more, um, beneficial and improved financial framework and outlook for the future of, of the city of Boston's funding and B P S's funding going forward. And, and with that, I would, um, sort of thank the council again, and, and be happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Starrett. Thank you for bringing us through that very quickly. I'm sure, uh, you have a lot of questions, uh, still. It's a pretty dense bill, trying to work through how it affects, uh, the district, but, uh, and the city at large. But, you know, we certainly appreciate you coming out here and giving us your first look. So with that in mind, I'll open it up to, uh, members for questions or discussion. Ms. Reyes, why don't you start us off, given B S A C's, uh, prime role here?
Hmm. Would you mind if I?
Of course.
Take a moment, yeah.
Of course, we can come back. Ms. Robinson?
This sounds great. My, my question really is, what about the monies that we've not been paid from the past? Where does anything stand with those? Is that just a wash as we move forward? Or?
Sure. Um, in a lot of ways, um, the city's been fortunate enough to be able to hold B P S harmless for those, um, you know, underfunding and, and cuts we've received at the state level. But, uh, for all intensive purposes, this is really starting with a clean slate moving forward, and, and while, uh, we certainly rue the, the hundred-plus million dollars in underfunded charter reimbursement that, um, has not been paid, I think that the state has really recommitted to funding it going forward, and we're going to have to hold them accountable to, um, make sure that they follow through on that promise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. O'Neil?
Yes, uh, two quick points. Thank you for the summary. I know it's early in the process, and we still have a lot to figure out.
Mm-hmm.
It appears to me, in reading it, a number of things that they've put into this should be favorable for Boston. But have we had a chance to estimate what we think the impact will be to us, or is that still too early?
Uh, it's a great question. It's probably the, the million or multimillion dollar question.
Sixty-four thousand dollar question, right?
Exactly.
I'd rather have it be the sixty-four million dollar question, but...
I'll, uh, I'll start with the first part. Um, the two main components that really make Boston a winner in this bill are both actually centered on the low-income piece. So, uh, as I'm sure you all know, um, the, the changes to the rate, um, that we get reimbursed or that we get funded for low-income students or economically disadvantaged students, uh, was increased significantly. And because of Boston's, um, high concentration of poverty, we actually, um, benefit from that substantially. The other piece, and which is the piece that, um, doesn't get quite as much publicity, but I think is, is actually quite, um, quite important, is the change in the count of students. So as I'm sure you know, in 2016, the, the district went to free and reduce lunch for, for all students. That, um, sort of eliminated the need to collect the, the free and reduced lunch forms, but at that same time, um, we lost about, the district lost about nine thousand kids off the rolls who, uh, were no longer counted by the state as low income. So in the intervening years, it hasn't really had a financial effect on us, because we were basically a minimum aid community, so they weren't really adding anything for us either way. But now that they've updated the rates, having those additional nine thousand kids is actually the key component to, um, Boston being a winner under the chapter seventy formula. And while it is too early for me to put, um, a dollar figure on it, I think it's going to be significant, um, the chapter seventy increase, with one caveat, that, um, charter school tuition is also going to rise in that same time period. So it's going to be really important that the chapter seventy number goes up. At the same time, we're going to continue to have to advocate for charter school reimbursement to make sure that, uh, additional chapter seventy funding is actually coming back to the school, not just, um, going out the back door.
So that it's actually gets funded.
Exactly.
Right. And so the point you brought up, though, um, is fascinating, because yes, when we gave up, uh, when we switched to, um, food for all, you know, Dr. Yuriate was very quick to point out about how we were no longer gathering that data, and that we were substantially undercounting, uh, students, particularly students from immigrant populations, uh, which was important, and it hurt us a lot on the funding. So I understand they're going to step up on the dollar mark, but how are we going to change the actual count to make sure we're capturing these students that we have been missing the past few years?
That's a great question, and, and it's something that the bill actually leaves up to the district to, to help determine with Desi. Um, for the first year, they're going to start with those 2016, um, numbers from a percentage point of view. Um, obviously, the district has changed in size a little bit, so we're going to basically get grandfathered in for one year, but then the district, along with Desi, are going to have to work together to figure out a, another way to count the students. That is more reflective of the population.
That is really critical for us, so, but you feel that it's captured in this?
It is captured in this, um, in the short term, but it's going to be, you know, pretty quickly that we're going to have to move to start figuring out a, an alternative method. And I think that Desi, um, working with the, uh, the department is going to be key, because they're going to have, a lot of other cities and towns are dealing with this, right? All the gateway communities, all the, the partners that we've made along the way of this sort of ed finance journey are all sort of starting to deal with that right now, and that's something that, um, I know a lot of folks are looking up at the state, and something that, um, we're going to have to start working on immediately.
Superintendent, let's carry on that conversation at a later period. There, there are ways I think we can be proactive. All of our schools, on an individual basis, know the students that are involved here. And there may be ways we can work on a school level to try to capture that data, to talk one-on-one with parents about the importance of this, because this is a critical issue. And we faced it in the funding this year, when particularly our East Boston schools were really being hurt by the counts. Um, one final question is, I noticed that it says, implement policy updates, and one of them is, and I find this fascinating, the Secretary of Education will collect and publish data on student preparedness in each district and high school for postgraduate success in college and the workforce. And I bring this up because I see Mr. Neil Sullivan sitting in the back, the executive director of the PIC, and the superintendent was just speaking at the fortieth annual meeting of the PIC today that you mentioned in your comments. And we saw so many examples, they were honoring students who were working on postgraduate success, and they talked about Success Boston. We have the sign right here. And so what is new about this? That other than they're going to collect and publish data on student preparedness? What, what is the thought process behind that?
Uh, that's a great question. I think that the, the committees are still working through exactly what that means from a reporting point of view, but I think that that's exactly that. It's a reporting point of view. There were certain measures that were included in, um, the governor's bill, for instance, that would have, um, potentially had clawbacks or take-back provisions with certain funding levels. We don't believe that this is the case. We believe that this is more of a, uh, robust reporting requirement and accountability requirement, but, um, with sort of limited, um, physical clawbacks or physical take-backs included.
So how can we get involved in that process as they plan it? I mean, we've had studies done in the past year that really looked at the success factors of our students that went on to college and beyond, and we're really starting to understand much more about what are key things that are making sense. I know, Superintendent, you're a big believer in internships and summer jobs. Um, and so what can we do to influence what they're looking at here and how the data is being used, instead of simply waiting for Beacon Hill to decide for us, so to speak?
I, I would say the, the most immediate thing is that this bill is going to go through two, um, vote processes in the next couple of weeks, both at the Senate and the House level. And I would say if there are, um, opportunities to file amendments or to, um, perhaps clean up, uh, certain languages or get more clarity on certain things, that filing amendments using our Boston delegation, um, could certainly be a path forward, but I would defer to the experts, um, around about what specific areas you might want to identify.
Okay, that's something I should look at more.
Do you know if they're looking at higher ed accountability as well as K-12 accountability in these measures?
Uh, I believe this bill just looked at K through twelve reporting, but, um, I, again, so I would have to defer back to the committees and, and get you a follow-up on that one.
So, Mr. O'Neil, in Minnesota, we passed a bill called World's Best Workforce, and it was a way for the state to, um, hold districts accountable for results, really results-based budgeting, and looking at, uh, five key factors. And we looked at kindergarten readiness, third grade literacy, we looked at graduation outcomes, we looked at career and ready, um, indicators similar to this. School districts had to develop a plan and closure of achievement gaps. School districts had to, uh, develop a plan called the World's Best Workforce Plan. They still do it today. And then if they are not meeting their goals within three years, this, the commissioner then could work with school districts to, um, set aside two percent of their fund, their general ed funding to more aggressively meet their goals. And so as commissioner, this is something that I supported. Now, as superintendent, right? I mean, but I think, um, it's a way for the, it's, it's actually a way for states to be involved and be partners in, um, accountability and meeting results. And so I think that what we're seeing is the legislature look at, what's the return on investment for the billions of dollars that they're putting out, and how then can they hold districts more accountable for strategies that are working?
And, and that's fine. And that's fine. I think my point in this is more, I want to make sure this isn't a state-mandated solution from folks who are a little bit removed, at least within BPS. And at least in the past year alone, we have looked at this very closely. So we have the Parthenon Report that looked at the early warning indicators of indicating why students are not going to be graduating from high school. We had the report that was done by the Rutgers professor, the chair is going to be a lot more conversant on the name of it than I am, that looked at why our students who are graduating from high school weren't graduating from college four, five years later. Their success Boston attracts this data relentlessly. We know what it takes. We're moving past the point of wondering why they're not succeeding. And so I think we should be aggressive in talking with the state about that, to have what we have already identified as measures of success be included in this, instead of waiting for, with all due respect, the folks at DESI and the folks at Beacon Hill saying, "This is what's required for success," and now giving us artificial measures, when we have the studies to know exactly what it takes for students to succeed. And it's things you've identified. It's chronic absenteeism. It's whether they've had an internship.
Yes.
It's whether they've had access to an AP class, so on and so forth. I'll get off my soapbox. Well, thank you, Ms. O'Neil.
Generally, you're saying, "Be involved in the policy before the policy is met." And this is actually an area that, you know, I know very well, and so I'll be taking a look at the policy and working with Justin on it.
This is your wheel box now.
I love this kind of work.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Neil, and thank you, Superintendent. Ms. O'Neil, you also mentioned something around counting earlier, and invoked Dr. Yuriate and her very helpful input in these discussions a few years back. I think it might be something that we can certainly get our higher education community involved in as well, because there has been a lot of research done as to what are the most effective ways to count individuals with, that have undocumented status.
Yeah.
And so she can certainly, somebody we can reach out to. So thank you for that reminder. Ms. Reyes.
Yes. So I'd like to echo, echo, I'd like to echo the thank you that other members have given, because this is great, even though I'm sort of just halfway through reading through the policy, and really excited about what it could bring. I have a couple of questions. First, on the line about fully funding charter tuition reimbursements, I'm wondering if that will cover money that has been lost in the past, or if that's just for future money that we may lose?
So it's a, it's a plan by the state over the next three years to get to full funding of charter reimbursement. So through this year's budget process, we were actually very, thanks to actually Chairman Michael Witz, we benefited from a new charter investment that they were able to make for us, so that was a good step in the right direction. This is actually them getting on a pathway to fully funding the every-year's charter school tuition, right? So basically, the city receives about $35 million a year to help cover some of the first-year costs of charter school tuition. Not all of that funding is actually, ends up coming back to the city, because the line item that it comes from is underfunded. So this would be a plan to make sure that the charter school reimbursement line item is fully funded. But I will say that that pot goes into what the city is able to then appropriate over to BPS, right? So the city gets about $260 million or so in what we call education aid, so that's your Chapter 70 and your charter school reimbursement. The city pays about $200 million of that right back to the state for charter school tuition. We then take that remaining $40 million and then add additional general fund dollars, and then make that the BPS appropriation, obviously working through the annual budget process with the school committee and the city council. So basically, it all goes into one pot, and we try to maximize what we can get back to the district. This is going to increase what can go into that pot, basically, and something we're excited about.
Okay. And I'm also wondering, I don't know if we know yet, but if the accountability measures will at all influence the support that we can get every year?
My understanding is that this is really going to be on the reporting and data collection side, not necessarily informing direct policies in the district, which is, I think, something that a lot of folks had some concerns about, certainly up on Beacon Hill. And I think that, you know, as we move through the process, we'll see if any additional clarity or, you know, additional amendments come through the process that might change that. But I think as of right now, we feel that there, the accountability, the sort of little A accountability in this bill is more around data collection and data reporting, as opposed to direct influence of district policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. And I think on that, on that point, you know, that's a key distinction from what the governor's original proposal was, which tied a piece of the funding directly to this notion of accountability. And so again, you know, I think this is a key piece that we had advocated against in our conversations with, with key members of the legislature in talking about how this whole thing might come together. And so again, we're very happy that, you know, that piece has been held out of the bill that's before us. But I know, you know, you're giving us, again, a very early look into how we might interpret how this act can affect us, and certainly this has to move through a much greater legislative process. We've got a lot of, a lot of road yet to go with respect to moving through the House and the Senate, and then to the governor's desk. But nevertheless, it's, it's good, and I think it's heartening, you know, to take a step back and take a look at what the financial, potential financial impacts will be of this act, because, you know, status quo, and I know you know this much better than others, Mr. Sterrett, would have had us at a deficit in probably two more years, two more fiscal years. And when I say deficit, what I mean by that, for folks that haven't been paying close enough attention to this, is we would have been paying, in effect, back to the state for our, the right to educate our children on a yearly basis. This Chapter 70 funding formula's been broken for Boston for a long time. We've declined more than 10% over the last decade in our state funding. It was up as high as 20% a little more than a decade ago, and we're down this year to somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% to 4%. And so with that steady decline, that would have met a net deficit in a couple of years. And so being able to pull ourselves out of that spiral that was owing to the formula that was written way back in 1993, to get us to a point now where we're talking about increases, is, is a very big thing for us and a very meaningful step forward. And so again, we appreciate the work that our legislative partners have done. I think what might be helpful for all of us, and for folks that are paying attention to this, is just getting a final understanding from you of what the next steps might be in the process. I know we need to go back to the House and the Senate. Do you have any sort of sense or timeline that you can share that might help people organize their thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. There is a really big urgency up at the State House to get this done. The Senate is actually planning to vote on this next week. They're actually working through the amendment process right now. So we very much anticipate that after it goes through the Senate, it'll quickly move through the House probably in the following weeks, and then probably get on the governor's desk sometime in later fall, early winter. But I think that now is the time to definitely, if there are questions or concerns, certainly continue to advocate, generally speaking, for the bill. But then if there are tweaks, start the conversations with the Boston delegation and other folks who share in the, into the interest of sort of getting funding back to the city of Boston and the district.
Well, that's great. And, you know, just as a final note, you mentioned it earlier, we've had so many partners in this, not only from around the state, but from within the city and the district. First and foremost, BSAC, our partners in the Boston Teachers Union that have been going out, working with the Fund Our Future folks, and so many others that have been, you know, very keyed in on this effort. Anyone that's out there that's paying attention to this issue and has thoughts about how we can make this bill better for Boston, we certainly want to continue to work with these partners, think about different amendments that we can hand up to the delegation to advocate for at the legislature, and get this moving, and get funding in place for the foreseeable future. So thank you once again, Mr. Sterrett. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate having you here on short notice.
Happy to. Thank you.
Great. We'll move on now to our next report, which is the Teacher Leadership Fund, a partnership between the Boston Public Schools and the Boston Teachers Union. This is one of the more exciting presentations that I look forward to every year. It's always a bit of good news, which is a nice thing. And as you can see, we have a whole team in front of us here this evening. So fellow committee members, as you might recall, the district and the union have collaborated over the past several years on an initiative to promote teacher leadership around professional development and innovative practices in the classroom. And we're always excited to hear about the cutting-edge work of our educators. And we welcome this update on some of the recent projects that have been undertaken by fund recipients, as well as some of the fund investments that are being made for this current academic year. So as you can see, we've been joined by a number of people. Paul Tritter, who's the Director of Teacher Learning, I think that's the title, but he can correct me when he gets into his presentation at the Boston Teachers Union, and who's been spearheading this work for a number of years as a joint labor management collaboration with the district. He's joined by a number of teachers this evening. Ms. Kim Kulisa-Karin from the Carter School, also with a child enrolled at the Quincy Elementary School, if I recall, and Yulana Insworth from the Geild School, who's going to be joining us as well. And both of these teachers are members of the fund committee. Assistant Superintendent Mary Driscoll from the district, joining us. And finally, the welcoming her back. I can't believe you're here. Shakira Ford Walker, who, along with her partner, gave birth a little bit less than two weeks ago to a beautiful baby girl, Ava. So congratulations. Shakira is Director of Teacher Development for the district, and has been Paul's closest working partner on this work. So with that very long introduction, I will thank you and ask you to take it away.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. And as you mentioned, this work grows out of, we presented a couple of years ago about an earlier iteration of this work, and it grows out of a labor management collaborative effort originally started under Chair O'Neil, and which you were very intimately involved in when we created the professional, what was it called, the Professional Learning Grants for Schools. And in the 2016-2018 BTU contract, we established the Teacher Leadership Fund based on that project. And the fund replaces a, the Lead Teacher Program, which used to provide a $2,250 stipend to one teacher in each school in order to perform duties that would change each year. And we decided together to roll that all into one fund, and to turn it into a granting program, which allows teams of teachers at schools, teams of educators at schools, to go out and address challenges, specific challenges that they see addressing, students who have been historically marginalized. The fund is governed by a committee of three superintendents appointees, and three appointees by the president of the Teachers Union. We were, the, the project overall aligns really closely to two of the school committee's strategic goals, specifically number two, about improved school quality, and especially that goal's focus on opportunity gaps. Each application to the fund requires the team to identify a specific opportunity or achievement gap and address it. And also, to goal number three, strong district leadership and high-quality, action-oriented teachers and staff. And this project in particular is really focused on that action-oriented piece. It really asks people to take a clear, sharp focus at a specific challenge and work to address it. Over, we'll talk to you a little bit about some aspects of the program tonight. You can see our mission there, and we feel like in the first couple of years, we've been, done really well at Bullets One and Two, creating those communities and providing access. Really where we see the next phase of our work is finding success with Bullet Three, to make sure that we're able to really celebrate and disseminate the new learning and practices that educators are able to do through this program.
The fund has gone through two rounds of funding. There was an initial round in the spring of 2018 for projects that ran during the 18-19 school year, and then another round of funding last spring for projects that just launched during this school year. So the data that we're going to be sharing with you tonight are, is based on the projects that ran during the 18-19 school year, because we have, those are the projects that have been completed. We put out the application each year in the late winter, early spring. Our first round, we just looked for what we called "action grants," teams of teachers that were ready to do something. But in response to feedback, we added the option of a "study grant" in the second round of funding, where teams of teachers said, "We realize we need to learn more about a topic before we decide exactly what it is we're going to do." And we look for either school-based teams of teachers or cross-school teams. And some of the most exciting work has been done by teams of educators that are working across schools. We use a rubric, and the rubric for the proposals, as we read them, looks for a strong root cause analysis, for identifying the right human resources and skills within the applicant team. In other words, you know, is there the capacity within the team to actually address the problem that they're identifying? And is it a clear and doable plan in the scope of time that's allotted, basically a one-year grant period, and in the, you know, amount of funds that we're able to provide through this opportunity? Each application has at least four readers, and the readers include members of this team, as well as members of the Professional Learning Advisory Board, other teachers, and other central office educators. Reading the applications gives us a real insight into the kind of problems that educators are really thinking about and trying to solve. Trends that we've seen in our first two years are a real desire to get, to build muscle at implementing RTI systems. Like, how do we really respond in a targeted, impactful way to our students with the greatest level of need? And then also, how can educators develop and implement culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and curricula? How can we take what we know is the right match for each of our students and really build that to scale, either in a single school or in a group of schools across the district? As, after we've scored the proposals on the rubric, we then do kind of a holistic look across all of the proposals, to be sure that the cohort that we fund has opportunities for schools at all levels, so elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, different types of schools. And we use the Opportunity Index as a, as a check to ensure that we're not reinforcing inequities by providing additional resources to schools that are already, you know, more heavily resourced. And also that teams are taking on a variety of types of challenges, because part of the, the goal of this is to build capacity and learning that can then be shared broadly. So we're looking for projects that, that address a broad range of issues.
So we thought it'd be particularly important to highlight some of the impact of the Teacher Leadership Fund as we see it thus far. At this point in time, about 7,000 students have been directly impacted by the work of the Teacher Leadership Fund projects, and we assume that many more educators will be impacted, given that many of the proposals that have been put forth on the table have actually provided professional development to a larger community of educators, both across schools and within schools in the, in the district. As Mary mentioned, teams of educators applied for these grants. The average team size was about six to 10 educators. However, the impact was wider, again, because so many of our proposals included providing PD to school communities that extends way beyond the realm of the Teacher Leadership Fund. Of the 93 applications we received in the 2018-2019 school year, we were able to provide funding for 25 of those projects. And at least 37 schools have been impacted, many of the grants, again, coming within the schools, and then there are a number of schools, teams, who work across schools, which is thinking about the ways in which we can create those communities of innovation and empowerment that Paul mentioned earlier in the presentation.
So Kim and, sorry. Kim and I now have the honor of sharing two bright spots from our first 2018-2019 TLF cohort.
I'm very excited to share with you the Tobin Tiger Streak Project, which was a whole, a whole community effort focused on chronic absenteeism, which seems very on topic, given the discussion earlier this evening. The team members engaged 40 educators and 450 students. Their team included teachers, paras, school leaders, students, families, and community partners. They trained students as attendance ambassadors. Older students who had previously experienced chronic absenteeism learned about the benefits of attendance and went into lower grades to teach younger students about these benefits. The students even came to our fall convening and presented their work. Their results are really outstanding. They had a 14.5% overall decrease in chronic absenteeism in one year. This is, in 2017, it was 33% overall, and that went down to just under 19% in 2018. So it's pretty outstanding.
The other team that I'm excited to share about is the school nurse team, and they saw a need across the system to support students with difficulty managing sickle cell disease. Many students didn't have sufficient knowledge about their disease or the specific tools and processes to manage it. A team of nurses spent a year researching best practices and creating a workbook for students, and a guidebook for other nurses and other educators who support these students. Many schools were involved. The project was particularly timely, as the district was required last year to educate all employees about sickle cell disease. We have several members of the team here in attendance today, so hello, Rosalind Pach and her team. As part of the deliverables of Cohort One, we asked each group to share their reflections from the Teacher Leadership Fund projects. We had overwhelming responses. 100% of grantees felt that they were empowered to lead innovation, and 92% of them were able to address the needs of the most marginalized students. So I'm going to voice some of the common reflections of the first TLF cohort. They decided that it addresses school-specific needs, it empowered educators, it encouraged the sharing of resources, and it broke down the walls between schools. And lastly, it valued the professional expertise of teachers.
On that note, as a teacher, I would like to share with you briefly my own personal reflection, being on this committee. This is my 11th year teaching students with complex needs at the Carter School. This is my 11th year teaching students with complex needs at the Carter School. Two years ago, I joined the Teacher Leadership Fund Committee, and it has changed my professional life. I wish everyone could have this experience, to see the macro-level view of the most innovative, creative, and thoughtful projects being funded throughout the district. What makes this new TLF model so transformative is that it creates teams of teacher leaders across the district who know what their students need. These teachers have innovative ideas, but don't always have the resources to bring their ideas to life. By funding important work in the schools throughout Boston, the Teacher Leadership Fund, sorry, to mitigate the inequity that impacts the opportunities and access for students in the Boston Public Schools. I am proud of the work we have done to fund projects that break down the barriers between great teachers and great instruction. A group of diverse teacher leaders at the Carter School, where I teach, were the recipients of the first TLF grant. This group of educators from multiple disciplines worked collaboratively to address our school's greatest need and our instructional focus, which is to increase each student's ability to communicate. The Carter team used the TLF grant to lead the district's first-ever professional development that was specifically designed for educators and families of students with complex needs. It was a huge success, a packed house, and it won't stop there. This is just one of the 50 seeds that the TLF has planted throughout the district that will continue to grow. It should inspire all of us to learn that so many of the TLF-funded projects continue to live on. Being on this team, promoting teacher leadership alongside the hardest-working people I know is the greatest honor, and I thank all of you for your support.
And my reflections on the committee. Joining the TLF committee has been one of the highlights of my past two years. The fact that there are two teachers on this committee means so much to me and other educators. It shows that teacher voice is truly valued and respected. The TLF puts money in the green light into hands of teams of educators who are innovating and attempting to disrupt the current paradigms of education for all of our students and even the most marginalized. And that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you all very much. It's very much appreciated. It's always so nice to hear about the good work that's happening in our district. You know, too often, we don't get to shine a light on the great work that our educators are doing across this district. And so, having this opportunity to hear about all the exciting innovations that you're doing across the district is really exciting, and we appreciate it. So, with that, I'll open it up to members for questions and discussion. Mr. Tran?
Hi, good evening. Just one very short question. How do you sell these programs to teachers? The reason I'm asking is because I looked through the list of teachers, or groups of teachers, who had applied and who had gotten, you know, grants. I don't see Asian. So, it's just, for my curiosity, how do you sell these programs to bilingual teachers or teachers who are teaching English as a second language? I gather that there are numerous issues involving second-language students, but I don't see that here.
I'd be, thank you for that question. I'd be very happy to go through the list with you there, at least. There are at least a few educators who identify as Asian, who don't have Asian surnames, who are on the, who are in the list. And I'd be happy to go through some of those groups with you. We go as, we try to use every network that we have in the, in the district in order to promote it. So, we go, we use the BTU newsletter, we use all of our teacher leadership listservs, the former Lead Teacher Program, the National Board Teachers, Lead BPS, Around BPS. And then, in order, because we sort of recognize this idea that often educators in the most struggling schools are going to be the people who have the least time to do something like fill out an application like this, we make a special effort to go to the, what was then the Network Superintendents for the, what was Network Two last year, for, but to specifically make sure that the application gets in front of the, you know, the educators in all of those schools. And there's, and I think there are a number of ELL-specific programs. One by an Asian-American educator, I think, that we were really excited about was last year, from the Horace Mann School, or, sorry, from the Jackson Mann School, Laura Newtonan. She did a project about connecting her students and families to culturally appropriate text, and she created book groups within the different, within the school, where students who were in separate ESL classes would do book groups with the students who were in the regular classes, and then take those books home and read them with their families as well. And another exciting part, specifically about Laura's project, was her, she then applied to present a workshop on her work at our Teacher Summer Institute this summer. So, we're really trying to build that kind of pipeline of teacher leadership, where people do the work, lead the work, and then share the work with others.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tran. Ms. Reyes?
Sure. So, I appreciate the idea behind this initiative, and I'm definitely excited to learn more about what happens and keep track of it over the years. That being said, I am curious about how these practices are or can be translated to other school settings or converted into tools for other school communities to use.
That is a fabulous question. And that's, and that's really the, like we said at the beginning, that's the leading edge of the work, that's the next thing that we want to do. We chose to highlight the two that we did do, could you go back one? So, the two that we did do, we chose to highlight those because they are sort of models of what that can look like. Sometimes it's by design, and sometimes it's good luck. And one of the things that we'd like to see in the future is, how do we really position this in the system, so that there's a much higher likelihood that innovations will get picked up? That's, that's sort of the challenge. But this Tobin one in particular, so the students, Alana mentioned that the students presented at our convening, but they're also going to be presenting on Monday, I believe, at the, the district is having an attendance symposium on Monday. And those students are going to come and share with other educators and other schools at the attendance symposium on Monday. And then, the nurse, the nurses, these nurses are incredible. And they, and at the end of last year, they presented their work to all of the school leaders in the system. And if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, the toolkits are now in the hands of all of the nurses in the system, and people are piloting it, trying out the different aspects of it, and actually working it with students. So, those are the exemplars. I don't want to say that every single one has spread like wildfire across the system, but that's, that's the aim.
Okay, good to know. And I am also wondering how the impact of each project is evaluated.
So, yeah, any, you can, you can take it.
Nice question.
Great question.
The perfect question. I could take it, too. All right. So, so each, so part of the application is that we ask each, we have a section where we ask each team to say, "What is the data you're going to collect?" So, how will you know that you're successful? And then, at the end of the project, they have to report back on that data, or if they were unable to collect that data, or the project took a turn, an explanation of why that was and what impact it had. So, you know, being reflective of teacher voice, it's not always going to be a specific test score outcome or something like that that we're looking at. So, it could be something different. So, again, you know, just because we have it up there, the Tobin's a real clear example, right? Chronic absenteeism was a problem. It's now less of a problem in a specific and measurable way. This, when you say evaluate the success, there were no tools to support, to support students with sickle cell. Now, there is a tool district-wide. So, it's, those are, each, we ask each project to evaluate, to say how it's going to evaluate itself, and then there's a reflection at the end and a data statement at the end to say the impact that it had.
Thank you.
Thank you for this great, great questions, Ms. Reyes. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. This is great work, and my question follows up a little bit on what Ms. Reyes said. My question is about sustainability. I know that it's only been one year. And the question is, you know, as projects are being chosen, and I see that the range of funding is between $2,500 and $15,000, if you've got that $15,000 project, are they for things that are one-shot deals, that may end up, like, within a curriculum or something that can be shared? Because coming up with that kind of money for that one school, again, nor, you know, moving it on to other schools may be more problematic. So, I guess the question is, how do you think about that when you're making the choices and the potential for sustainability?
Certainly part of what we're reading for, when we're reading the applications and looking on the rubric, is this idea of capacity building and sustainability, whether it be a small group of teachers within one school are going to learn something that they will then share with their single-school community, or whether it's something that could potentially be shared across schools. So, we, you know, we don't tend to, projects that, you know, are either, you know, buying materials that would only be able to be used in a, you know, short lifespan are not ones that score well on our rubric.
Okay, thank you.
And I think part of this work is thinking about the ways in which we can integrate this in such a way that it becomes deeply embedded in the core work of the system, rather than reliant on either grant funding, or in this case, to be negotiated through the union contract, which is a good thing here, right? Because it depends on collaboration between both labor and management to see it be successful. But I think thinking about the ways in which we can make these types of innovations, a key part of the work we do in the system is something that we're constantly thinking about with this fund, as well as some other projects, that we hope to come back and tell you about at another time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you all for presenting on this and for serving on this committee. I am absolutely fascinated by this. If we continuously say the teachers are the closest to the students and have the best ideas of what can be done, this is putting our money where our mouth is, and allowing teachers to develop ideas, but to work collaboratively with the BTU on this, and actually fund programs, fund ideas, see how it works, work out a process, have a cross-team like you all represent right now, is fascinating. So, one quick question for you, is you funded 25 out of 93 proposals. So, if dollars weren't an issue, roughly, what do you think, how many of the 93 would you have funded? Because I'm sure some of them, you just looked at and said, "Yeah, that just doesn't make sense, it's a need we already have, it's actually being done here," so on and so forth. But roughly, what, is there a collective sense? Is this something you've talked about?
Does someone else want to answer that? I have a slight, I like to, I think that's a good question. It would be, it would be hard to say. It's, just remembering, this came out of the idea of a professional learning grant. So, it's about development, right, of educators, of students. And so, every idea that comes in comes from genuine student need, something that teachers are seeing. The grants may not always be perfectly written, the grants may not always be done really well. So, one of the things that we've integrated into the process is, any person who doesn't get the grant, we, we all sign up to provide a 30-minute feedback phone call to help them. So, if you don't get the grant, you get feedback, and part of that feedback phone call is about identifying other possible resources that exist in the district in order to pursue a solution to the challenge. So, you know, they may not all be great proposals in the sense of a traditional grant proposal, but the needs are all real.
And I fully respect that, and thank you. And I'd love to hear that feedback loop. That's really, really great. I'm wondering, though, is the restraint in picking 25 out of 93 the dollar amount?
Yes.
So, if you had $500,000, would you have given more dollars to the 25, or would you have had more proposals? So on and so forth.
I think more proposals, yeah.
More proposals, okay. So, there was still a decent amount of proposals out there that you felt were worthwhile of funding, but, but for the lack of funding?
Yes. And from the first to the second year, we saw a drop in the proposals. So, only assuming that if more people got the opportunity, that, you know, it would increase the number of teachers that come back the next year to apply. I think where, obviously, a lot were discouraged the first year when they did not get funding, especially after coming out of the Lead Teacher Program, where it was, you know, inequitable across the board. Everyone got, you know, everyone in, or one person in each school was the lead teacher. Now, it became like you had to apply, and so, so some of the teachers that were lead teachers before might not have gotten proposals, so, yeah.
It would be interesting to do an analysis, and you may want to try to touch base with the finance team in particular. I don't want to quite say a cost-benefit analysis, but I bet you some good things came out of this, that we say, "Wow, if it is, A, expanded district-wide some of the ideas that came out of it, there could be a savings for the district, or better outcomes for students," so on and so forth. But also, it gives more ammunition to working with the superintendent to try to expand this fund. So, I think it'd be great, you may want to loop in finance to help you do the, we're hearing the soft benefits of it, right? Of having these wonderful nurses working on the sickle cell program, and now there's a toolbox available for all of our schools. But then, how many picked it up? How many students were identified? This becomes the nuts and bolts, so to speak, of the toolbox, to use the analogy that you gave, to justify funding more programs, going deeper, et cetera.
I appreciate that comment, the contractual language around it actually does contemplate that possibility, and sets the $300,000 as a floor. And does say it could, it could go higher, so.
And I can't let this opportunity go by, and I'm going to mispronounce a name, I apologize, Ms. Calusa Karen?
Yes, Calusa Karen.
Okay, thank you. Because, talk about innovation, not only did you work on this, and you mentioned what the Carter School did, but I recall being in your classroom last year with Superintendent Casilius and former interim Superintendent Perrell, and your headmaster, and how you used the 21st Century Furniture Fund to actually develop a new program for your students. You were showing us how it used to be by eyesight, that they did it on old stickums, and now it's actually a computer program, and innovative use of the 21st Century Fund. So, you're innovating all over the place, and thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. And it was actually, I'd be remiss not to say that the fund actually gave the opportunity for the expert to come and speak to our school about communication. And out of that, we were able to really get, two of our students right now are getting trials for eye-gaze devices. So, we got a $15,000 grant, but that's $34,000 worth of an investment to our students. So, it actually, we doubled it, so it's not so bad.
And I trust the superintendent's looking to coming back to your classroom and beating Mr. Hanlon's score on that.
I hope so. You are all welcome anytime.
That's hard, it's really hard to do.
It is.
So, thank you very much. Thank you all for your work.
Rigorous instruction, yes.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neal. And just to the team, once again, you know, I think the key takeaway here is where you started in the presentation, which is, you know, thinking about how we scale the work, how we communicate the work that's being done by the members of the teacher, the recipients of the Teacher Leadership Fund all across the district. We'll really look forward next year to hearing a little bit more about how that work has progressed, as long, as well as hearing about, you know, once again, some of the newer projects here. I'm so glad you brought your team as well, you know? It's great to have a cheering section, you know, nothing else. And I know Mr. O'Connor from the Carter School has shown up to support one of his educators as well. So, it's greatly appreciated to have, you know, the team out and supporting the effort that's been made here. One more opportunity with Ms. Walker as well, I want to make sure that you bring back to your partner, our best wishes for her work at the Winship in its second year with, as a commendation school, following the recently released MCAS scores as well. It's great work, and we're very proud of the work that she and her staff is doing over there. So, thank you once again. We look forward to continuous, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, I just have one other thing, which was, thank you for remembering to do this. We, the fall issue of Teaching Tolerance Magazine just came out, and it features one of the projects that is funded in the 2019 round. The Gardner is addressing, is implementing an anti-racist project, professional development and curriculum in their school, and the Teaching Tolerance Magazine has sort of an extended profile of the work that the teachers there are doing through the support of the Teacher Leadership Fund. So, I'll pass that over to Ms. Sullivan, and thank you very much for the support for the program.
That's excellent. And thank you for raising that as well. You know, the Gardner received the Human Rights Campaign's Welcoming Schools Award. It's, I believe, the second in the district, and also the second in the state to receive that just last year. And so, I wouldn't expect anything less from the work that's coming out of that school. So, thank you once again. We'll look forward to having you back again next year to talk more about this work.
Thank you.
Well, our final report this evening is the 20- Well, our final report this evening is the 2019 State Assessment and Accountability Results Report. At this time, I'd like to invite Executive Director of Data and Accountability, Ms. Mary Dillman, please step forward with your presentation. Joining Ms. Dillman will be the Chief of Academics, Dr. Charles Grandson, Chief of Accountability, Mr. Corey Harris, and Senior Analyst Monica Hogan. Hogan, excuse me. We'll just allow the team a couple minutes to get themselves set up and when you're ready, you can take it away, Ms. Dillman.
You got it, thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I just say, I just want to thank Mary Dillman and the ODA team for putting this together. We put it on a fast track to get it to you because we knew the results were coming out yesterday and we wanted to be sure to give you quick information and turn around, not make you wait for it for several weeks on the agenda. And I just want to thank her team for working 24 hours all over the weekend to get this done. So very much appreciate the hard work your team put in getting this report ready.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cassilius. In large part due to our wonderful analytics team. I have Monica Hogan, our Director of Analytics, joining me, as well as the folks in our assessment team and performance management. It was definitely a team effort and we're glad to be able to present this data to you all tonight, so fresh off the presses. So as I said, I'm Mary Dillman, I'm our Executive Director of Data and Accountability. This evening, we're going to be sharing the 2019 State Assessment and Accountability data for the Boston Public Schools. We'll be reviewing data for the district overall as well as for individual schools. We'll be covering accountability, MCAS, and access for ELLs results. Before digging into more detailed data, I wanted to start with just reviewing some major highlights and areas for growth. As the superintendent already mentioned, first and foremost, we want to start by congratulating the three schools that made exceptional progress in 2019. So the Hail and Winship for their designation as Schools of Recognition for High Growth and Channing for transforming from an underperforming school to making substantial progress toward targets. There's a lot our district can learn from these schools in terms of promising practices. So for instance, at the Winship, Principal Mona Ford Walker emphasized the importance of offering a well-rounded program that includes academics and specialty offerings for all students. Principal Ford Walker also credits Winship teachers and staff for making sure that every student receives exactly what they need. At the Hail, Principal Romine Mills-Tech has underscored the importance of building authentic relationships with students and meeting each child's individual needs while maintaining consistently high expectations. And at the Channing, Principal Dr. Carleen Pignato has shared that the Channing takes a whole-child approach to learning, which includes addressing students' social, emotional, and academic needs and integrating arts and science into the curriculum for all students. The school is also focused on literacy to ensure that all students are reading at or above grade level by the end of third grade and committed to strong engagement with families. So definitely wanted to mention those three schools. In terms of, at the district level, two highlights include that two-thirds of our schools improved relative to 2018 performance, and that's as indicated by earning 50% or more of target points. In addition, the vast majority, so 96% of our student groups at the district level experienced typical or better growth on the MCAS. Some highlights for students in non-high school grades include meeting targets for all students' achievement in all tested subjects, English Language Arts, Math, and Science, meeting the target for reducing chronic absenteeism, and exceeding the target for the lowest performance students' achievement in math. For the high school grades, the district exceeded the target for the four-year cohort graduation rate, exceeded the target for advanced coursework completion, and met the target for English learner progress in English language proficiency on the Access for ELLs assessment. That said, we do have some areas for growth. In particular, two major concerns include the fact that 41 of 104 schools that received an accountability designation in 2019 require assistance and intervention and that historically marginalized groups often made less progress against targets than the district as a whole. Specific accountability indicators that are areas of concern for non-high school grades include the minimal progress for English language proficiency on the access and also minimal progress for lowest performing students against most of their targets. The high school level, their concerns include limited progress in English Language Arts and Math achievement, an increase in the annual dropout rate for school year 2017-18, and an increase in the percentage of students who are chronically absent. Turning to 2019 performance on MCAS, some highlights include for grades three to eight, the fact that more students are meeting and exceeding expectations since transitioning to the Next Gen MCAS in 2017. So the percentage has increased from 31% to 36% of students in that time in ELA and from 31% to 33% of students in math. Achievement has increased in 2019 for every accountability group in grades three to eight for ELA and for math. At the high school level, a major highlight is that grade 10 science achievement increased for all student groups and for the district overall. And lastly, in keeping with trends over the past several years, across all grade levels, former English learners continue to outperform the district overall. These highlights are counterbalanced by several areas for growth. One particularly pressing concern is that significant achievement gaps persist and have widened in some areas. This table summarizes gaps in either Scaled Score for grades three to eight or gaps in Composite Performance Index, CPI, for grade 10. So the Next Gen Scaled Score range is from 440 to 560 with 500 as the minimum threshold for meeting expectations. A difference of two or more Scaled Score points is considered meaningful. So as you can see from this table, these gaps are significant. Given that this is the first year of administering the Next Gen MCAS in grades 10 English Language Arts and Math, we are presenting achievement throughout this presentation using CPI in order to facilitate trend analysis with the legacy MCAS assessment. CPI ranges from zero to 100 with students earning 100 if they earn a passing score and a difference of two and a half CPI points is considered statistically meaningful. Again, as you can see at grade 10 as well, our achievement gaps are sizable, they're just statistically meaningful and in need of considerable improvement. Additional areas for growth include that at the high school level, on average, BPS students struggled more with the transition from legacy MCAS to the Next Gen MCAS than other 10th grade students across the state. And I will delve into this more when we get to the 10th grade data section of this presentation. On a related note, English learners experienced an especially significant decline in achievement on the grade 10 English Language Arts and Math assessments. Now that I've gone over those high-level highlights and areas for growth, I'll delve into the accountability results for 2019. So this is the second full year of implementation of a new statewide accountability system. And as you can see in the table at the bottom of this slide, 2018 performance is weighted 40% and 2019 performance is weighted 60% in order to come up with a cumulative percentile and target percentage. The system measures five different indicator categories, which you see in the left column, achievement, student growth, high school completion, English language proficiency, and additional indicators of chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. The state weights indicators differently depending on the grade span in the school. So regardless, achievement is by far the most consequential indicator, accounting for 60% to 40% of a school's score, depending on grade span. Schools and districts are classified into accountability categories based on a normative component and a criterion reference component. The criterion reference component measures performance against targets and targets are set for the all-students groups and for the lowest performing 25% of students in a school. Schools and districts earn zero to four points for each measure, depending on whether performance declined, was unchanged, improved without meeting the target, met the target, or exceeded the target. The normative component measures performance of students in a school compared to other schools in the state. This measure is reported as a percentile from 1 to 99, which is calculated using all available indicators for a school. Now importantly, districts do not receive accountability percentiles. For 2019, BPS has been classified as making substantial progress toward targets with a target percentage of 56%. Schools and districts are divided into two primary classifications, so requiring assistance and intervention or not requiring assistance or intervention. Under requiring assistance or intervention, schools may be designated as either requiring focused targeted support or broad comprehensive support. Moving from the right, if you're looking at this graph over, you'll see 13 schools in 2019 were designated as having insufficient data. So that means these schools didn't have enough data to calculate an accountability percentile or earn a designation. So these schools are primarily early education centers and schools with special populations. Eight schools remain in need of broad comprehensive support at this time. There are 34 schools that are classified as in need of targeted support. There's considerable range of need within this group. So schools are designated for targeted support due to one or more of these factors. And you can see a table summarizing this at the bottom. So 28 of the 34 schools have not been identified as requiring broad or comprehensive support, but they still have an accountability percentile below 10. Two of those 34 schools were identified for having a graduation rate below 66.7%. Two schools were named for having one or more student groups and the lowest performing 5% of student groups statewide. And two schools were identified for having one or more student groups with a test participation rate below 95%. Schools with accountability percentiles above 10, for which none of those factors are true, are categorized based on performance against targets. You can see that we had two schools with limited or no progress toward targets, 11 schools that made moderate progress, 35 schools that made substantial progress towards targets, and 14 schools that were meeting or exceeding targets, and that includes the two schools of recognition. Moving on, on this slide, you can see the 2019 performance for the eight schools that remain in need of broader comprehensive support. Schools are listed in descending order based on accountability percentile. Important to note is that two schools, Henry Group and Up Academy Holland, have accountability percentiles above the 10th percentile for the second year in a row. I'll move on to grades three to eight MCAS results. This chart on the left summarizes the distribution of achievement levels for the state and district for grades three to eight as well as by grade level for BPS. As you can see, there's a consistent pattern across grade levels with 36% of BPS students scoring, meeting, or exceeding expectations as compared to 52% of students statewide. If you look at the table on the right, you'll see the three-year trend in average Scaled Score, which is a measure that the state uses for achievement. Across student groups and grade levels, achievement has increased in the three years since transitioning to Next Gen MCAS with overall Scaled Score increasing 2.5 points. In terms of growth, SGP, all grades and student groups experienced growth within the typical range, which is 40 to 60 points. And the three-year trend for growth in grades three to eight ELA has been largely positive. This slide summarizes achievement gaps over the past three years by showing the difference in average Scaled Score between each student group and the average Scaled Score for the all-students group. Latinx, Black, and economically disadvantaged students, as well as students with disabilities and English learners, continue to perform below the all-students average, while white, Asian, and former EL students continue to outperform the district overall. We prepared similar data representations for all tested subjects in this presentation, so you'll see a strikingly similar pattern of persistent achievement gaps across subjects and grade spans. This remains a very pressing area for improvement for the district. Turning to grades three to eight math performance, 33% of students were meeting or exceeding expectations in 2019 compared to 49% statewide. And over the last three years of administering Next Gen MCAS in grades three to eight math, we've experienced modest improvements in average Scaled Score and a positive trajectory in growth. As with grades three to eight ELA, we see large achievement gaps by student group with the gap widening between the district overall and economically disadvantaged students and English learners, as well as widening achievement gaps by race. 2019 was the first year of administering the Next Gen MCAS in grades five and eight science. A quarter of BPS students scored meeting or exceeding expectations compared to 47% statewide. Transitional CPI allows us to make some longitudinal trend comparisons between performance on legacy MCAS and the Next Gen MCAS. As you can see, average science CPI has increased by 2.4 points overall over the past three years. Nonetheless, science achievement gaps between Rachel groups persisted between 2017 and 2019, though the achievement gap for students with disabilities and English learners did narrow by two to five points respectively in 2019. Turning to grade 10 MCAS results. So Next Gen MCAS was administered for the first time in 2019 for grade 10 English Language Arts and Math. Next Gen Science MCAS will be administered for the first time for ninth graders in spring 2020. Transitional CPI is, again, the measure we're going to use because it allows for longitudinal trend comparisons between performance on the legacy MCAS and the Next Gen MCAS. There are significant differences between the legacy and the Next Gen MCAS. So the Next Gen Assessment sets standards for meeting expectations that are far more rigorous than the standards for scoring proficient on legacy MCAS. Proficiency on the legacy assessment indicated readiness for high school graduation, whereas meeting expectation on the Next Gen Assessment indicates readiness for post-secondary success, whether that's college or career. So those are obviously very different measures. So as a result, similar to when the state transitioned to the Next Gen Assessment in 2017 for grades three to eight, it is not advisable to compare achievement on the Next Gen MCAS to performance on, achievement on the legacy MCAS. So for instance, if you look at the table in the lower right, you can see that while 91% of students statewide scored proficient or advanced on the 2018 English Language Arts Assessment, 61% of students scored meeting or exceeding expectations statewide on the 2019 grade 10 ELA assessment. While transitioning to this more rigorous assessment, it's important to be mindful of the existing competency determination requirement, which requires students to earn a passing score on the ELA Math and Science MCAS exams in order to graduate. As such, the state is using a score equating process to determine what score on the more challenging Next Gen Assessment is comparable to performance on the legacy MCAS exam. And that's summarized in this table to the left. As you can see, for instance, the minimum score to pass the competency determination for English Language Arts in 2019 was 472, that's a bolded number, which is within the partially meeting expectations achievement range, so not at the meeting expectations threshold. As a result of score equating, passing rates, average CPI, and achievement level distribution statewide track with 2018 data. However, this is not true for BPS in 2019. So the chart to the left shows that performance distribution in 2018 under legacy MCAS and in 2019 under Next Gen MCAS, 45% of grade 10 students scored meeting or exceeding expectations in ELA. Average CPI has declined for most student groups over the past three years and growth has been mixed in that time period. Black and economically disadvantaged students experienced a meaningful decline in performance and the largest three-year decline was for English learners of eight points, six CPI points. As with grades three to eight, achievement gaps are persistent and have widened at the high school level. A particular concern is the significant performance gap for English learners of 20 CPI points and the increasing gaps that we see by race. For grade 10 math, 47% of students met or exceeded expectations in 2019 and overall mean CPI declined with the largest three-year decline, again, for English learners of 5.1 CPI points. Other student groups experiencing a meaningful decline in performance include economically disadvantaged and Black students. All student groups had growth in the typical range with the exception of white and Asian students who experienced high growth in 2019. Achievement gaps in grade 10 math widened across the board in 2019 with, whether by race, gender, as well as by economic... with whether by race, gender, as well as by economic disability and English learner status. We see a different picture with high school science performance, which has not yet transitioned to the Next Gen MCAS. So fifty-nine percent of students scored proficient or advanced in two thousand nineteen, and the three-year trend has been positive for all student groups, with average CPI for former English learners increasing by eleven points since two thousand seventeen. That said, achievement gaps still remain by student groups in high school science. So the competency determination requirement, which I mentioned a few slides ago, requires students to pass ELA math and science MCAS in order to graduate. The percentage of students meeting the competency determination has remained stable over the past three years at the state and district level, so fifty-eight percent, and this most recent year for BPS, and eighty-seven percent at the state level. Finally, I'm going to briefly summarize performance in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Access for ELLs exam. The distribution of proficiency levels for English learners as measured by access has been stable over the past three years, with approximately twenty-eight percent of students scoring in levels four to six. Student growth percentile on Access, or SGPA, has also been stable with performance in the typical range, which is forty to sixty, just as it is on MCAS. The state accountability system includes an indicator for making progress towards English proficiency, which is measured using results from the Access for ELLs assessment. It's calculated by the percentage of students who meet annual targets to get them to English proficiency within six years. Fifty-three percent of English learner students in non-high school grades made adequate progress in English proficiency in two thousand nineteen on the Access assessment, while twenty-nine percent of English learners did so at the high school level. I realize that was a wealth of information to review in a short period of time. I appreciate your attention and patience at this late hour. Our team welcomes the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Stillman, and thank you once again to your team for putting this together in such short order. We know you gave us a couple of different iterations of this presentation over the last few days, and so that's helped us get prepared. But nonetheless, it is a lot for each of us to absorb. So I'll open it up now to my fellow members for questions and discussion. And I'll look around and see. Ms. Robinson, would you like to kick us off?
I just have one that I want to ask right now.
Yep.
And it's on page twelve. It's about schools requiring broad comprehensive support. So several of our schools were designated back in two thousand ten of needing significant support, who are still needing it, and even though it's a complete turnover of students. So that's what I don't understand, that if we are now almost ten years later and we have still, one, two, three, the Dearborn English High and the Dever, who are still in this category. There's obviously something we're not doing. Either, like, who's being assigned, who's teaching, I don't know, but I cannot understand how schools, a decade later, would still be having this kind of issue, so.
Of course, I'm new to the party. But having done this work across six other states, the place where I'd like to start is with, we talk a lot about principals being instructional leaders. And what I'm trying to assess right now is to what extent have we supported our school leaders to be instructional leaders? So that's where a lot of my focus is. I've had a chance to be in eleven schools thus far to look at instruction, and what I'm seeing thus far is we're not challenging our students. A lot of the tasks that they're being asked to do are at the retrieval level. The cognitive demand for students simply isn't there, based on early indicators that I'm seeing. I'm not surprised that that's what I'm seeing. And I don't think it starts with blaming principals. I'm really trying to assess what have we done to help them build their capacity as instructional leaders and to work with the other leaders in the building. So that's probably going to be the starting place that I recommend, based on early indicators that I'm seeing.
I think that, I mean, I think, you know, to your point, Ms. Robinson, you know, it's a philosophical question, but it has real-world results, right? And, you know, this is the heart of the work that we're getting at, which is so much of the work that we need to do in this district is, you know, typically framed around a classroom, but is meant to address so much of what a child brings into that classroom from the outside. And so I think, you know, as we move through this, you're right. You're, we've cycled through a number of different school leaders, a number of different student cohorts, so why aren't we seeing the results? And, you know, we've still got the same kids coming through that, or the same attributes of kids that are coming through that are creating those barriers, and those are the things that we need to fund for.
I sort of understand that, or agree, but I still look and listen to all of the grants that come in, all of the training that continues to happen. And, you know, so the question is, what is the impact of those things? And particularly in schools that have had chronic issues, you know, what else do we need to do there in terms of family engagement, in terms of everything, basically?
You're bringing up the exact question that needs to be asked. Where's the urgency?
Yeah.
Right?
A decade.
And so we have ten years of chronically underperforming schools. What are you going to do about it, superintendent? And so right now, I'm getting into every single school to see for myself. Mr. Harris has been getting in with his teams to see and review these plans. It's obvious that some of these plans, even in receivership, are not improving to the point that's good enough. And so there needs to be significant work done, both in school and out of school, in terms of the whole community. And so we'll be doing these needs assessments within these schools. The DESI review is part of that, to look at the curriculum and the instruction. Our team is going to be reviewing with them as well. But doing this work as well as state commissioner, I could see that there was an actual formula for getting great results in terms of school turnaround. Schools had a positive school culture. They had an excellent principal. They had masterful teachers who understood the standards and the alignment to the assessments. They also had strong community supports and parent engagement and adequate resources. And so those are the things that we have to be focused on as we begin to support these schools in a very intentional way. We have forty-one schools in this report that say they need significant support, and we're going to give it.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thanks, Sonia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you for this presentation. I know it was done in fairly short order as well, so thank you for that. This is the most important work we do, and so looking at this is critical for us to understand it. I know there were a lot of bright spots. So thrilled with what's going on. The Channing is a perfect example. But here's what my concern is, and even on the Channing, when we look at this list in the appendix on page forty-two of the Schools in Need of Focused Targeted Support thirty-four, there are a number of schools on here that had been previously in turnaround status. There are several schools previously in turnaround status, moved up and became, in the old vernacular, a level one or a level two school. And guess what? They're now back in need of focus support. And if you talk to those school leaders and the teachers there, what happened? When they were, they were nervous about leaving turnaround status because of all the extra supports they got, the extra financial support in particular. And then all of a sudden, guess what? You're doing great work. Now we're going to take away a whole bunch of the things that caused you to be successful, and we're getting yo-yo. I mean, the, I mean, look at the history of Jeremiah E. Burke. How many times it has gone back and forth, up and down? And I know it's former headmaster, now deputy superintendent, right?
No, she's high school superintendent, secondary superintendent, yeah.
Right. McIntyre.
McIntyre.
Dr. McIntyre.
Dr. McIntyre, of course, thank you. You know, her biggest fear, right? The up and down of when you take away from turnaround status, you're losing the funding that got you there. And superintendent, I think you hit the nail on the head when you just talked about these schools, and one of the things you said is, do they have adequate resources?
That's right.
And it will be interesting to look at, to cross-reference this list with what the financial implications in the budget the past couple of years of schools that have had declining attendance. And we've been talking about this, so we're getting on a cycle where the attendance goes down, and so we take away resources, and then, you know, the results become less, and it becomes a vicious cycle. So having said that, and I will say one thing that makes me very nervous when I look at page five of the accountability area for growth, high school grades, increase in annual dropout rate. And I know it's a small percent, but for when years it's been going down, and all of a sudden it's ticked up, and worsening chronic absenteeism at the high school level, which we know is such an early warning indicator. And I'm nervous between that, and I was a little confused by slide. There's not an, I don't have the number, but it's competency determination by end of grade ten, and you're saying we're staying fairly standard, we're staying fairly level? How could that be the case if, if the slide that showed the results for grade ten had us down substantially? Is it because of the leveling of the, of the score sort of, or the adjustment on the scaled score range? Is that's what's keeping us level?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So this is showing, so students need to meet the competency requirement in each subject. And so this fifty-eight is the percent of students by the end of tenth grade who satisfied all three. As you might have noticed, we actually saw an increase in our science CPI and performance. So without delving into the subject level pass rates, my presumption is that it's because the decline in ELA and math is being offset by that improvement in science, and so that's why we're seeing this consistent fifty-eight percent. We could certainly follow up with providing you that data by subject area.
Thanks, but doesn't the decline in the English and math foreshadow potential problems with students meeting graduation requirements two years out?
So we have, in two thousand nineteen, we had not yet transitioned at grade ten level to the Next Gen MCAS assessment in science. We are transitioning to the Next Gen Science Assessment this spring for grade nine students. So in two years, the competency determination will be based also in science on that more rigorous assessment. So it is important that we reflect, I think, on performance with transitioning in ELA and math and anticipate how we can support our students in science with that transition.
So when we talk about early warning indicators for our students from middle schools foreshadowing problems in high school, are these figures foreshadowing a problem for us two years from now?
In terms of the science performance?
In terms of our students who are now in tenth grade, ultimately meeting graduation requirements by the time they graduate, or potentially.
Yeah, so I mean, certainly, if it's not one hundred percent satisfying the competency determination, we know that that's a requirement for graduation. Any gap there is of concern, absolutely.
Thank you. So Dr. Grantson, I'll pose this question to you, and to the superintendent. You know, what is your initial assessment? Sorry to put you in the spot of this, but when you look at this, what are the two or three things you like? But what are the three or four things that you and your team are going to be working on? What are going to be action items out of this? And superintendent, feel free to chime in as well.
Yeah, so one of the things that, well, many of the things we're really excited about that we've been charged with by Dr. Casillas is looking at how we are providing vigorous opportunities for learning for all students and in an equitable manner. And so conversations around MasCor, MasCor Plus, uniform, more uniform graduation requirements that also allow schools some level of flexibility for their unique identity and circumstances. But that allow students to even playing field. As we know, we have a large amount of students who are transient, who go from high school to high school. We want to be able to provide high-quality schools across BPS. We also have talked about engaging educators and school leaders in a conversation around what is our pedagogical framework? And how does it meet the needs of all learners? And what is the sort of unified curriculum that we're going to offer across our district that the central office can actually support? And so actually, this is a conversation I had with Michael Cashley, Executive Director of Council of Great City Schools, around the trend that was the case nationally in large urban school districts and other places ten years and prior to that. There's a culture of innovation, and I think you referenced this earlier, right? We've been learning a lot about what works and what doesn't work. And now we're going back to, okay, we've learned more about what works. So the council just put out a report in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen that shows that many urban districts are going back to now a sort of centralized curriculum offering. The TNT report that came out last year, the New Teacher Project, showed that across a lot of urban school districts, students weren't getting grade-level tests because of the turnover that you see in schools at the teacher level and even at the school leader level. The quality, having high-quality, rigorous curriculum is usually something that can best be done by someone who's been working on that in their area of expertise for years. Teachers know how to execute it, and those individuals know what the quality of materials are. How do you put those individuals together and ensure that you have quality professional learning and supports to schools? And so I think those are some of the things, MasCor Plus, conversation, pedagogical framework, clear curriculum that the district can support, that we've been charged with, that we're excited about building on for this year.
There will be a more comprehensive plan in the very near future that talks about what Dr. Grantson was just talking about, which is the curricular frameworks, the standards, how teachers get those, professionally developed around those, how they align specifically to the assessments and how the assessments measure, whether students are successful or not, and what we expect them to know and be able to do, which is just critical. It's absolutely critical. If we're going to measure, if we're going to continue to measure ourselves on standardized tests, then it's not fair to our students if they are not having opportunity to actually be taught the material that is going to be on the test. And so I think that that's, that's, that's the missing link. And so we have to be able to get very clear about that in all of our schools. And right now, schools are actually picking their own curriculum.
Yep. I.
So I just, I ask for a little indulgence in your patience to get assessment of where we're at with that, so that we can better provide coherence across all schools so that children have the opportunity to demonstrate what's expected of them.
And, I'm trying to think how to phrase this. While you're looking at, since you're doing a comprehensive look at, are our students being taught what they're being tested on? Let's not forget to look at, are they being taught what's being tested on the ISEE as well in all of our schools?
Well, you know, we have an RFP coming up for that.
I understand that, and I just, I put that out. But as I said earlier, I think we're kind of at a watershed moment now. Dr. Casillas, with you here now, you're doing, you're listening to, you're learning. As I said before, we have a bunch of studies that gave clear-cut data on what's wrong with the district and what needs to be done. And we have always been cautious because we've had a focus on innovation across the district. Approximately, I believe, forty percent of our schools have some level of autonomy. And we've been very hesitant to make mandates when it is perceived as taking away autonomy. But when we now have X percent of our schools that are in need of focus support by state standards, and I recognize that as just one thing. But when we're also looking at how many of our students are graduating ready for college or ready for career, which is the ultimate measure of what we're trying to accomplish, it's time for improvement, and it's time for our action steps. And if we know, if the data shows, Dr. Grantson, as you just alluded to, that a centralized curriculum is getting better results, then let's have a centralized curriculum as long then let's have a centralized curriculum as long as, and I know you're thinking about it, superintendent, that schools can have a different version if it is peer-reviewed and it meets standards, right? So that we're still recognizing a culture of
Innovation.
Innovation or But these results are demanding that we change for our students that we serve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Ms. Robinson, you had something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted a bit of clarification. Where it talks about we've been designated as making substantial progress towards targets with a target percentage of 56. How does that target percentage get determined? And why is it 56? Is it 56 out of 100? Or 56 out of?
Yes, it is 56 out of 100.
So wouldn't that be considered failing?
So
56 is still not?
Yeah, so that's a great question. As, if you look in the appendix, you can find the detailed data of where the district earned and lost points. Going back to your question about how those ranges are constructed. So for every single target, a district or school can earn zero to four points. So zero points if performance declined, one if it's unchanged, so like effectively stable, two if you've improved but not yet hit your target, but moving in the right direction, three points if you met the target, and four if you exceeded. And that's how the state came up with the range. So 50 to 74 points means that on average, you're improving, so you're earning at least two of four points, moving in the right direction. Whereas if you had 75% of the points or higher, that means on average you're meeting or exceeding your targets. So that 56% puts us at the lower end of that substantial progress range.
Ms. Dillman, do we have targets for next year?
We do. I'm so glad you asked that question, Dr. Casilius. We do not yet have targets from the state.
And when did you get targets last year from the state?
It was a progressive rollout of targets, some of them being received after testing was completed in 2019, which is obviously a challenge in terms of using the targets to inform our action at the school and district level.
Is that typical? And sorry to fire off a couple of different questions here, but was, if memory serves, that came as a result of the change in the tests in part, and the change in leadership?
I think it's worth following up with the state to learn more about the reasons behind the delayed provision of targets. It was atypical last year, which was the first year of getting targets under the new accountability system. We do not yet have targets for this year, and we do not yet have dates by which we can expect to receive those targets. It doesn't stand with past precedence under the former accountability system, though those targets were set on a six-year timeframe with the goal of having the achievement gaps from where you started to six years later. And so the targets were the same each year. Under the new system, the state is setting annual targets. So it doesn't matter if you improved a ton in 2019, they're going to set the same expectation of continued forward progress. Similarly, if you had a significant decline. So it's part of the reason why the targets need to wait until after, due to that target-setting methodology, until after the school year is completed. But to my understanding, there's no reason we couldn't have them now.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry we interrupted.
Yeah, the other question is really more about what happens with this. I know this comes, these kids have moved on to the next grade. So for teachers who are teaching this year's third graders who've come up from the second grade, how do we begin to understand what wasn't happening so that they get that kind of training, you know, materials? I mean, you know, how do we help teachers think about, you know, what they need to do differently to improve scores and opportunities for kids?
So as this data continues to become available, and we get item-level data on assessments, what the academics team does is go through, and a lot of that was done earlier in September as well, to go through to see what we're missing the mark, and where there's areas for growth. One of the areas I shared with Dr. Casilius, the science team looked at, for example, grades five and eight, science, technology and engineering assessment last year. Over 70% of the questions were around engineering practices and skills. That is not something that we've had curriculum to teach and address. So the standards changed in 2016. We're catching up. We're trying to roll out a curriculum that actually supports that. And so as we do that kind of analysis, a lot of, we saw some progress even last year, and a lot of great work was done last year to bring convenings of teachers and school leaders together to say, hey, if you make these shifts, right? Even if it's around instructional time, you'll see better results for kids. And, you know, we never, it's not about teaching to the test, but it's about, as Dr. Casilius said, like how are we teaching students to do well for what we are expecting of them? And so it's about standards-aligned instruction has been our message. And so what we were able to do at the beginning of this year is take two sort of academic teams that were separate, formerly known as the Academic Response Team, and then you have members of Academics and Professional Learning, and they were sort of out there doing different things. We've combined them now, so now they're for ELA, math, and science, at least five dedicated team members who are experts in their content areas, who are then deployed by the school superintendents to support schools. So the more we do of that, the more supports we can provide teachers with.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, I'd just like to, you know, remind folks on kind of my theory about assessments. These are really good assessments for a systems check. For providing for us a lens on how well we are supporting our schools, how well we are delivering on the standards. But in no way, shape, or form should they be a reflection on students' individual progress at one time, right? You can look at standardized tests over time for an individual student on multiple different types of assessments. But using a state accountability assessment is really about an assessment and a check on us and the supports that we're giving to schools. And so the high stakes nature of the M-CAS and the raising and the constant raising of the bar for them is troubling to me. And so, because it is a one-time test that's given to these kids. And so I think that we need to really take that seriously then. If those kinds of stakes are going to be aligned to students, then in those particular subjects at the high school level, we have to be particularly intentful to ensure that they have what they need to graduate with that diploma.
Well, thank you, Superintendent. You know, you mentioned to me earlier that you want us to hold your feet to the fire.
That's right.
And, you know, you've certainly made your point clear in answering Member O'Neill's questions about coming back and giving us, you know, some clear definition. And I think, you know, to some extent Yeah. You know, to some extent, I think, you know, some of these returns that we're seeing in the assessment give us a bit of that guidance. You know, we know that we need to work on chronic absenteeism. We know, as has been pointed out in the questions, that we've had a bit of a dip in our gradual gains in the closing the dropout rate. We know that we're having significant changes, declines, if you will, in the performance of our black males, our disadvantaged youth, our English-language learners. So we have a sense of, you know, where it is that we need to especially focus our work. But I think it's important for us to give you and your team the time to think about, you know, what are the strategies that you're going to employ in order to do that? So we won't ask you for that tonight. You know, this is a good first look for us to understand, you know,
We just got the results.
What it is, right? You mean, you haven't made your plan yet?
Well, not my plan. It's got to be everybody's.
That's right. But I think, you know, we want to make sure that we follow through, and you've got an opportunity here with your 100-day plan, with the building of your team, with working with the school committee on a strategic plan to bring a lot of this material together, even with, you know, once again, with the state coming in here for our once-a-decade assessment. To take all this information and figure out, you know, what is it that's going to help us organize our strategies for attacking these pervasive gaps. So thank you, Ms. Dillman, and the rest of your team here for putting this work together in such short order. I know this isn't representative of your team. You have many others that work in ODA. So please wake them from their sleep and let them know that we appreciate them not getting sleep over the weekend. And we will look forward to continuing to hear from the district on our performance as well as our plans for the future. Thank you. Have a good night. Well, that concludes our reports. We'll move on to the public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do. We have one speaker this evening, Peggy Wiesenberg.
Thank you. I want to thank you for focusing on the Senate Bill 2350, otherwise known as the Student Opportunity Act now. It was previously other names. I hope in doing the advocacy with our Boston delegation that you'll also focus on a few improvements that I believe are needed. There is language in the bill that could be interpreted to give state officials the power to approve or reject local school spending, including authority over how local dollars are spent. This is an issue for you and other school committees across the system. So I hope you'll be working with those associations, other superintendents and school committees, to push back on that. Although the transparency provisions of the bill that require districts to file plans for closing the opportunity gaps that we were talking about tonight is laudable, allowing state officials to take away local autonomy and strip power from you and other local committees is not good for students. We know that from our experience with low-performing schools, the Mata Hunt and other schools. Provisions are going to be used to target low-income, or communities that serve low-income students and students of color, not just BPS, you know, other cities and gateway communities too. We deserve the same level of local control that wealthy, white suburban districts take for granted. The bill would create new bureaucratic apparatus at state and local levels to review plans and to respond to state directives. That may be a waste of money that could better be spent in our classrooms. We urge the Boston delegation to make it clear that opportunity gap plans, like you've been talking about tonight, cannot be used to take away money from students whose schools are struggling. And we hope that BPS and other communities will have the power to develop their own local opportunity gap plans that include input from students, parents, and community. So we're delighted to have a superintendent that is out there talking to the students, parents, and community, and we're going to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiesenberg.
That concludes our speakers this evening.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business from the committee? Mr. O'Neill?
So, Mr. Chair. Ms. Robinson and I, along with Dr. Granson and several others, had the opportunity last Friday to do something that most Bostonians don't get to do, and that is seal on the USS Constitution when they did a turnaround cruise. And thanks to Captain Chick, who's the captain of the, the commander, excuse me, he believes a commander, Executive Officer Bendah Dedhamboy, who's now the executive officer and will become captain of the Constitution in November. They now have an annual cruise where they invite educators along because they believe so much in education. And we had the opportunity to be with Dr. Granson, BTU President Jessica Tang, along with Ms. Natasha Scott, who is the Director of History and Social Studies, and a number of BPS educators, and also students from the Harvard-Kent, which is the first time they've invited students along. This was a trial practice to bring a class, a social studies class along, and they hope to expand it next year. But it's absolutely fascinating when we think of the resources we have behind us or all around us, and we have to keep pushing on this idea of the city as a classroom, not just our students learning in a classroom, but taking advantage of all the opportunities we have around us. And Ms. Scott actually took a few moments to show us and several others a website she developed by herself, on her own, that not only has all the curriculum for history and social studies, but she even developed one that shows what she called place-based learning webpage. She actually listed all the museums and opportunities for students in the city that the teachers can bring field trips on, and she has it color-coded. So does this one provide a free pass? Or is this one on the MBTA? Or does this one provide free or reduced admissions for our students? So teachers can look at this and plan field trips. I mean, it was phenomenal what she did, and I was extremely impressed. We talked earlier tonight about innovation. Ms. Scott just did a wonderful job with this, and she has such enthusiasm for the value of our students learning history and social studies. But more importantly, this city is a classroom idea. And I, you know, Superintendent, you're starting to learn, all these things you studied in the history books growing up are right around us. And the more we can get our students out from parts of the city that have no idea what the Constitution is or what it's like to be out on the water, let's make sure we're equitable in our approach in encouraging our students to do this. But we have to be, we have, when it comes to life like that, you can't help but learn. So, Ms. Robinson, I bet you have a comment or two on it as well?
It was wonderful, and I keep coming back to the issue that we've given every single one of our seventh to 12th graders a T-Pass. But have we really taught them how to use it so that they can access the city? So that, I mean, that could be another thing, that you don't just get transportation. You really do get this key to learning, and maybe some of the schools can do some work with their students around that as well.
What a fascinating idea, because that webpage I referenced, I believe, Dr. Granson, is just for teachers. And I wonder if there's a way to work with BSAC that we can make it available for students so that you can see all these museums that have free or reduced admissions for BPS students? Because if a bunch of them do offer it, and now if they have the T-Pass, and we can encourage it. Just a thought, Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's, it's actually wonderful to hear. You know, I was somewhat upset because I heard about that cruise, and then I forgot about it. And then on Saturday, I said, I wonder when that cruise is, and it was the day prior, so I'm glad you guys got to enjoy it, and I'm glad that the Constitution does that and honors our educators every year.
And they will be doing it next year. Executive Officer Bendah, who will be captain next year, committed to doing it again, and he would love more of our educators, and he would love more of our students on it.
Well, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Our next school committee meeting is going to take place on Wednesday, October 16th at 6:00 p.m. If there's nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Since I was giving a shout-out to the folks from the Constitution, I would be remiss if I did not also mention the Constitution Museum, who were actually the ones who put this together and invited us along. So thank you to Ann Grimes, the Executive Director of the Constitution Museum.
Much appreciated. Was that your motion as well?
Yes, so moved.
All right, unanimous consent. Good night.